Student representatives for this year from the high school, so just so everybody knows that, and we'll be hearing from them in a little bit. At this point, the board would be very happy to hear any comment from the public concerning any matter of the district, and this is a very important thing to have happen because the board very much wants to hear comments and suggestions and feedback on how things are going with the district. This obviously, we always at the beginning of the startup of a new school year, there's always things that we should be made aware of, and it's wonderful to have folks here. Just in terms of making sure that everybody has a chance to speak, which is really important, we'd like to limit each individual's comments to three minutes, and if you can, if somebody has already covered a lot of the points you're gonna make, please acknowledge that somebody had covered those points, but, and then, and then please use your three minutes to add any, any additional embellishment, but I'll leave that up to your judgment for your three minutes, so. So with that, if anyone...
And your name and address.
Pardon? Oh, yeah, and we also will need your name and address for the record. So with that, the board would be very glad to hear comments or any feedback from anybody. So would anyone like to address the board? Okay? Yep?
My name is John Carlos D'Angelo. I live on sixty-five Arbor Crossing, East Lime.
Good.
So I'm gonna state an obvious thing. The, uh, the bus is really a complete nightmare.
(laughing)
But the administrators have done a nice job to try to handle the issues and get back to us, and we appreciate that, or I appreciate that, but I would just ask, maybe you guys can put together some sort of subcommittee on how to fix the buses, because it's really a shame, I mean, a lot of the parents don't go to the school all the time, but the parents all see the buses come to the house. It puts kind of a bad taste in parents', you know, it's like what they see, so. I'm, I kind of understand, I think, what happened, I think they just relied too much on the computer system this year, and they didn't actually do like a sanity check on the, uh, on the routes, so maybe a subcommittee can be put together, check their routes next year. Probably won't be as bad, I know redistricting made it worse, but it was, it was really bad this year, it was, it was much worse than it needed to be, so I just hope that you guys can say that.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Just another comment, this is that, um, this is an opportunity for the public to feed, give feedback to the board, and the board members all have to sit here and be constrained so not to respond. We do take the, take the notes, and then toward the end of the meeting, we, there will be an opportunity for board members to discuss what future agenda topics might be added to our upcoming agendas, so that the entire public knows that if we are going to discuss something, that they're made aware of that. So, so that's, that's why it's not a, it's not a back and forth, it's you tell us what, what your concerns are, or what, or what positive feedback you'd like to give us, and, and we take that in for, for our further discussions, okay? So with that, anybody else like to address the board? Anybody else?
Thank you.
Please. Yeah, sure.
My name's Todd Donovan.
Hi, Todd.
I'm at twenty-three San Piper Lane. I, I apologize for not knowing if an agenda's available, if, if there is, I didn't see it or find it, and it may be posted somewhere. If it is, will the buses be discussed at some point during this meeting? Because what I don't want to do is, you know, get into a speech about something that you probably are well aware of, and we could waste, or end my three minutes here, I'm just, I'd rather hear first and...
We do, we do have it, we do have it on our agenda for this evening, so, um, apologize.
Listen then.
Okay?
All right, thank you.
Good.
Thanks.
(inaudible).
Anybody else like to address the board on any matter concerning the district? Anybody else? Sure.
Hi, Jill Johnson, I live at two thirty-four Grassy Hill Road, and this is about the buses, but I just want to state before we have the conversation about the buses, that my main concern is that the kids have not been to school on time yet.
Right.
Thank you.
Good.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Please, so, yep?
Hello, I'm Maria Gonzalez, I live at two four three Grassy Hill Road. I'm also here about the buses. I'd like to wait and hear what is discussed. I would like to know why two buses were cut this year, if the number's justifieded, or if there were some other causes, and why there wasn't preparation, knowing that redistricting was going to confuse the matter anyway.
Very good, very good. Anybody else like to address the board at this time? Anybody else? No? 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 Okay, all right, okay. With that, we'll move on in our agenda to the, we have some minutes for approval, the August nineteenth, two thousand nineteen Board of Education minutes. Would anybody like to make a motion on those minutes?
I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes of August nineteenth's regular scheduled meetings.
Second?
Second.
Second, Candace, second, sit. Any discussion, changes, modifications to those minutes? No? Okay, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained? Uh, let's see, Lee, Bill, and Eric, yeah, abstained, so we have those minutes all set. That brings us to special reports, we have our, oh, we do have a selectmen representative here, I think it's...
Yes, you do.
Hello?
Hello, Mrs. Berry.
Welcome.
Good evening.
Yeah.
So I'll be reporting on two or three different commissions this evening, you're not the only act in town.
Yeah, that's for sure. That's for sure. Good to hear.
So, from the Commission on Aging, they all have problems with it.
Yeah, we might need to borrow one from them, Roseanne.
So, if you think about it, if you've lived in town for a time, our earliest senior restricted housing was in the seventies, and at that time, many of the people who occupied those were young seniors, and now they have become many, they've become older seniors, and many of them not able to drive, so the Commission on Aging's experiencing a tremendous demand in busing and busing services for the elderly seniors. They provide busing for them to get to doctor's appointments, as well as to do other things such as assistance with shopping, and, of course, we can't just outright refuse to allow senior housing in town, but there, there is at least one more on the table for age-restricted housing, one development. So the zoning commission is dealing with several proposals too for additional housing, which I think would be of interest to the board. The gateway expansion, all of those apartments will be three-bedroom. There are also two new housing developments in addition to that, which will not be age-restricted, and I'll report further on that at the next meeting, when I have some more...
Mm-hmm.
One of the housing developments, we did try to prohibit, and the court ruled against it, so I will give you an update on that, because I think that, particularly with completion dates of the housing, I think it's going to have some... The Harbor Management Commission just finished its report, which is required by the state, unless you're a boater, you probably don't need to read the ninety-five-page report. It is out there, and it doesn't have anything to do with property rights or anything, it's strictly harbor management issues, as I said, required by the state. The Natural Resources Commission has just finished a report, extensive report, on water prognosis for the upcoming next five or six years. They spent two years working on the report, and as, obviously, the school system is one of the big users of water, there may, there will be some impact, I think, that we will see in terms of trying to do some kind of restrictions. Probably when we were doing the, the, the new buildings, we perhaps should have considered putting in low-water toilets and things, we, you know, after the fact, it's kind of late, but that occurred to me, that that would have been one of the things that we could have done for bathrooms that needed to be rehabbed. So basically, that is my report for the evening.
Very good, thanks, Mrs. Berry.
Thank you.
Any questions for our selectmen representative? Yes?
Yeah, Ms. Berry, can you give an update on Costco? Seems like it's coming along pretty well.
Yes. The zoning commission just reviewed their plans, they are currently out of compliance with some of the things that they said that they were going to do, which they have not done. The zoning enforcement officer will be meeting with them, but probably they're, they're hoping for a November opening, mid-November opening.
Really? That's fast.
I do have to say that I saw they have a membership office in Midway Plaza today.
Oh, huh.
Roseanne, I heard that the construction that's going on on the roads is gonna go right up to that November timeframe as well?
Yes, it is.
Okay, all right, okay.
Other, other questions?
No.
No? Good, thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
Very informative.
How's the start of your new year going?
Great.
Good, good. Okay, well, we have two student representatives, Paige, I'll turn it over to you.
So, I'm happy to be back, this is Grace, she's a junior.
Hi, Grace.
So the first day of school was a success, it was fun seeing faces, and overall, it was a good guy. In-school clubs are starting to have their first meetings and vote on officer positions. The senior picnic was last Friday and was a success, we enjoyed lunch and yard games, Emma Cook's, that was really fun. Back-to-school night will be on Thursday at six-thirty. We also have school pictures, both on Wednesday and Thursday of this week. Spanish Honor Society has their first meeting tomorrow, which they will be voting on officers. Math club had its first meeting today. The Peers Reaching Out Club started its first meeting the first week of school, and student senate meetings have started for individual grades and for full senate. Senior college planning night will be on Thursday, September nineteenth, at six-thirty in the auditorium, and the seniors have bought their parking spots, and will be decorating them this weekend, so I'll be sure to get pictures.
I was wonder, I was wondering, I saw a little bit of black top over, I see you got a clean slate to work with.
Yeah, so that'll be this weekend, and then I think if it rains, Monday, but I'll be sure to bring your pictures for next time.
And in addition to clubs, sports have been off to a good start. Football had a scrimmage and won against Griswold on Friday, from, it was forty-nine to eighteen, and they'll be starting their first regular season game at home on Friday night at six-thirty against West Hill. In addition, swimming has its first home meet next Tuesday against Lyman Memorial, and cross-country just had its first invitational meet over the weekend, and will have the next meeting tomorrow at Fitch High School at four. Soccer has had a few scrimmages, but they have their first home game on the sixteenth for the girls and the seventeenth for the boys, and field hockey has had it, has its first home game on seventeenth against Woodstock Academy.
Oh, wow, so things are off and running.
Yep.
Wow. Paige, you're already, they're already planning for college, right?
Yes.
Holy smokes.
Exactly. Yeah.
Starts early.
I always like all the chairs, always...
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, I just, yeah, it's just, yeah, but, yeah.
Yeah, I like all the free stickers, it's a plus. It's fun, I always, yeah.
Good, any, any other questions for student representatives? No? Okay, now, thank you very much for, for being here.
Thanks for coming.
Okay, that brings us to our consent agenda. Does anybody have any issue with any of the items on the consent agenda?
No.
No? No? So with that, I'll entertain a motion.
I would like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as posted.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
A second?
Who's the second?
I think it was Candace. Okay, everybody all set? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, passes unanimously, and for those that are watching, there were two items on the consent agenda, the first one was the approval of an out-of-country field trip to Mexico for next February at the high school, through the, through the high school, and, and the second one was a generous donation of seven hundred and fifty dollars from Niatic Lions Charities for the, for the East Lime High School's Viking Band, which is really doing quite well.
Yeah, they really keep going.
In terms of numbers, yeah, kind of exciting, yeah, which is really neat to see.
Yeah, fantastic.
I just want to say that I want to commend Mrs. Berry for her trip to Mexico. I was very glad to see that this was not merely the exciting trip...
Yeah.
Like one where kids would actually go to school four hours a day and learn Spanish.
Yeah.
Bravo!
That's good. Very good. All right.
I do like that.
All right, so that brings us into our discussion, action items for the evening. First one up under front facilities and communities is discussion of student busing and transportation. Jeff, which I guess we guessed right on this one.
We needed to add this to the agenda, I mean, I'm not gonna sugarcoat it, it's been a disaster at the start of the year, we've got some major issues, you know, this whole process, you know, for our parent community, and everybody watching at home, which hopefully we have many viewers tonight, started back in last February with...
...the district needing rerouting all the buses, as well as, you know, as we talked to the budget season, the removal of, you know, of two buses, you know, the routing system, you said that this can happen within the timeframes, and we had thirty to thirty-five minute runtimes that the system was showing, you know, would work. Obviously, man is better than, I think, computer systems at this point. Not to mention, you know, we, over the summer, we had about forty students, new students that came into district, many towards, you know, in August, thirty students that left the district, so there's always that turnover, which I don't think we factored in necessarily, so, different run stops, you know, you, kids that might be on one side of the road, now it's changed the other side of the road, which messes up the bus, so, a whole, I'm not gonna make excuses for it, there, there's been a host of issues, and the runtimes have been delayed. Our biggest concerns are the safety of kids and getting the buses to school on time, and those are the two major factors that we've been, you know, prioritizing and focusing on mostly. It has, and not to mention, you know, the, the, also, you know, the traffic in the morning of Flinders Four Corners, as we've, we've watched the buses trickle along, because once, so everybody knows, once, you know, the buses are held up at the high school level, it now backs up the middle school, and then it backs up the elementary. It's a trickle-down effect, because the same buses are used for all three separate runs. So if we don't get the high school runs right, and, and on time or earlier, then it's gonna have, obviously, an impact on the other ones. So, over Labor Day weekend, you know, Kim Davis and, and her team, transportation members worked diligently to revamp routes and, and move kids from different buses, which did help some, caused some confusion, but we, it needed to be done. Now we're at the place of, we need to add in some additional bus support. We've got one run in particular, and it's, it's bus two right now, is giving us our biggest problem. We, we need to add in some bus support for that run, and the other piece that we really want to do and need to do is we need to back everything up ten minutes. We need to start the high school runs ten minutes earlier, and echo that information out to all parents across the community that buses would run ten minutes earlier. That will alleviate and get the buses through the congestion, the high school level at the Flinders Four Corners, get them here to the high school and dropped off by seven-fifteen, because right now, it's like seven-twenty-eight, seven-twenty-nine, seven-thirty, that's way too late, high school's already starting. So if they can be dropping off and leaving at seven-fifteen, we're capturing the fifteen minutes there to get the middle school runs moving, because we've got three buses in particular at the middle school that are arriving past that eight-fifteen mark, so those have been issues. So, everybody just needs to back up ten minutes, which we're going to plan on trying for probably Wednesday, and we're gonna communicate that out tomorrow in a letter, and then, we already kind of backed it up a little bit at the high school last week, at one point, to try and see what might happen, now we're gonna, we're gonna move forward, backing up ten more minutes. We need to get kids to school on time, that's the bottom line. If we still are finding that we, we are having minor issues, we, we might need to come back together, maybe the idea, you know, Gina Carlisle, the subcommittee, not a bad idea at all, but let's see what this ten minutes does, it should help to alleviate and avoid some of the congestion on the roads too. I mean, obviously, first week, the flooding and raining didn't help us, the ninety-five accident, two accidents this morning didn't help us, because one was all backed up, but hopefully we can get this flow going, which is what we need to do. So, there was a cost associated with that, obviously, one bus is sixty thousand dollars, you know, in the budget for this year, you know, we were saving a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to put elsewhere, so, thinking, take, if we run a, add a middle school run in, that one bus would run a middle school run, it would cost us about twenty thousand dollars, but then, you know, it would add to, to that bus two, to help move that, that bus run along from high school to middle school to elementary. So, that's, that's where we're at, you know, right now, we, we continue to address it, and I know there's outside that, parents have not, some parents have not been happy with their bus stops, you know, changes, you know, we're, we're trying to appease as many as possible, but that adds time to the runs too, and we add more bus stops in, so we have added some bus stops in as well, which we, you know, hadn't planned for. So, we're working diligently on it, and I want to commend, you know, Kim Davis and some transportation folks for trying to keep up with the volume of responses back, I've jumped in and tried to respond, you know, to some parents as well, but it's, I'm not gonna sugarcoat it, it's been a nightmare for the start, and we don't want to do this again next year, so, and I can redistrict next year, we'll have it where we need to have it, that's for sure.
I think by administrators riding the bus too, to really see hands-on, I think that that was key, to bring back some information to Kim, to see where else we can make some changes. Also, for the bus drivers, I think ensuring that they know their routes ahead of time...
Absolutely, yeah.
Is imperative.
Yep.
I, I think just assume that they are going to know that until I see a bus driver to run along with a sheet, so...
Yep, that was another issue, we ran it, I'm glad you brought that up, Candace, because that was not necessarily the case. They were not as prepared as they should have been, I think, I felt that we were, I don't wanna say given a little bit of false information, but I was an impression that, you know, every driver would have run their route with the bus, and that's not what happened.
No, so by us holding them accountable...
Exactly.
...will help, I think, too.
Yep, definitely, so we need to start much earlier next summer, in the earlier August timeframe, and make sure they're outrunning routes with buses, to make sure that the runs work with a bus, because there's some places you can't turn around with a bus, if you're running with a car, you know, which I heard was happening at times as well, that's a problem.
Yeah.
So...
Jeff, I had, the question was, I know that several districts across the state of Connecticut have had problems, issues with getting enough bus drivers.
Yeah.
There, I've seen extensive advertising and unprecedented levels, how ours...
We've been okay with...
...our service doing?
Yeah, we've been okay with drivers, I haven't had any issues of, the bus can't run because they don't have a driver.
Okay, good.
It's one thing I'll credit for a student with, in my five years, I've never had an issue with, with, you know, having drivers and, you know, not being able to have a bus roll, because I know a number of districts, one Shelton, for instance, had to close school on the second day, because they didn't have enough drivers, so, but we've been okay there.
Mm-hmm.
I just want to add really quickly that I really like the idea of developing a bus subcommittee, honestly, it might really, it very well may help a tremendous amount, maybe for this year, or before.
Could you repeat that, I'm sorry?
Oh, that I was in favor of, of commit, you know, getting a, a subcommittee, a bus committee, yeah.
Yeah, because it's a three-year contract, too, that we just started a new, a new contract for first students, so three years is gonna come and go pretty quick. So, you know, if we end up down the road, you know, switching to a whole new bus company as well, we gotta be prepared for that, because I know I've talked to Spal Freeman in Guilford, I talked to, they had some major issues in Guilford last year, as they moved their high school time.
Yeah.
And he said it took them till October, that actually Halloween was things were finally, you know, running the way they should be running. We're not going that long, but, yeah, that was, that was crazy, so...
Lee, did you have something to add?
Yeah, just to be clear, the ten-minute earlier start time is justifying for high school, with then the implication of buses will actually be on time for the start times that are already...
Exactly, exactly, yeah, but we've got to communicate out to all levels, all three levels, because, you know, parents might, are getting used to, you know, a little bit later of a time at the elementary, exactly, used to coming late.
Yeah.
So we want to articulate that out.
When's the effective date of that?
I think Wednesday.
Okay.
I think we'll put it, try and put it together tomorrow in a letter, and send it
out, you know, tomorrow. I want to, I want to watch, too, and see what the times are tomorrow morning, take away this morning because of the I-95 accidents, have a clean morning tomorrow morning, and see what, you know, what our times look like, but I think the ten minutes, especially for getting kids to school, that's what's, you know, what's most important, that kids are on time.
Mm-hmm.
So...
Can you give that two or three days to really be able to evaluate on, assuming?
With the ten minute?
Yeah.
Oh, definitely, yeah, yeah, absolutely, yeah, and I mean, if it, if there's, we're still having issues, then we'll, we'll, we'll be back to the table to address them, for sure.
Roseanne, did you?
Does the state still require the number of buses that must be provided per student for evacuation purposes, because a lot of the high school buses are pretty underpopulated? Is there a way that parents could sign a waiver that students can drive, not use the buses, so that we could free up a couple of the high school buses?
Well, we, we've talked about that idea, Roseanne, the only thing is, I mean, there's always, we, we're mandated by law to provide transportation, so if they, if something happens where there, something in their schedule changes, and we need to reinstate that bus stop, we have to do it. So we could ask them, and say, you know, some might say, I'll drive the whole year and I'm all set, but if something changes, we have to be prepared to then pick up that child at the bus stop at any given day.
But I can't imagine that it would be the number proportionate to the number of empty seats that we see every morning when those high school buses pull in, which, of course, we need middle school and elementary.
Right, that's right. Yeah, and, bless you, and that's part of what the system was telling us, that, because we were hearing a lot of that, that there's a lot of empty buses that are roaming around, they're driving around town, so that's what we really, you know, we took a close look at it last year, and determined through the system that can, that we could, we could eliminate, you know, two buses and feasibly still do it. We learned a lesson, you know, the system didn't show us what we needed to...
But you eliminated the two buses altogether...
Yes.
As opposed to just figuring on freeing up a couple of the high school buses, which would still reduce the same total number of buses.
Yeah, the, the only issue was, we were told, you know, if we, if we, you, you purchase a bus, you know, sixty thousand, you pay for that bus no matter whether it runs, you know, high school, middle school, or elementary, sort of thing, so if you didn't run it the other two, you know, you basically waste your money. That's what we need to work with for a student on, to ensure that, you know, we can't have it that way, we might need to run, you know, one middle school run, we might need to run one elementary run, if this, things don't clean up in the next, you know, week, so... Correction, you mentioned the middle school bus, I think one extra, that only costs twenty thousand. Yeah, exactly, if we, yeah, if we can do...
No, no, he said you...
Point of order, point of order, so, so we, I apologize, but we really shouldn't have any conversation like that, but, but, since he heard what you said, go ahead, Jeff.
I'll clarify, what we want to do is to be able to run one middle school run for bus two, whether first student agrees to pay for that, that's what's the question right now, we have to go back to first student and talk with, we still need to run a middle school, an extra middle school bus, is what we need to do. If that bus two run is, that one is run, so that congestion is fixed, there's something to say. Right? Yeah, so I think the other piece of the busing, obviously, you know, we're, we're in, we're in it with everyone else, and you want to get, get the times consistent, because, you know, then parents have to go to work, and get home, and arrange...
The things, so, so there's an impact at home, so I, I don't think, I think, I think we all understand that.
Yep.
But, but on the, just the, I think as part of that busing subcommittee, I think we should have a conversation about that bus safety drop-off.
And clarify, what are, what are our guidelines, what are our policy, how we're going to do that, and does it still make sense when you revise, that you bring your, your last year, but, yeah, actually, anyway, you may want to revisit that, we may not, but...
As part of our discussion. Yeah, good, good. Jill?
Just wanted to bring it up, I thought you said, Jeffrey, is twenty thousand, it's just an estimate of the price, is that for...
The price for one run, middle school run, because it's thirds, high school, middle school, elementary, sixty thousand total, so...
We have a back from, so we're estimating...
That's what I'm waiting to hear back, I'm, yeah, I'm estimating twenty thousand for an extra middle school run, which would alleviate the congestion between high school to elementary, yeah, that's what we're looking at.
Maybe we should, you know, re-explore Roseanne's suggestion as well.
We could, I mean, yeah, we could easily do it, I, I just want to, you just have to be prepared and able to, at any given point, to turn around the next day...
Right, that's the...
And go pick up a child, it could be, you know, add ten minutes to a, you know, a bus run, but...
Just to follow up on that, real quick, I mean, is, if we're thinking about adding just one run, is there, is it feasible at the middle school, or at the high school to free up one bus, so that that could be the one that does the extra middle school run?
Yeah.
That's what I was thinking, yeah.
So, it's a, it's a good, it's a good idea.
There's possibility.
Bill?
I, I agree with that idea, and I think it's a good one. The question is now, you're reorganizing the high school routes-
So, we got to be careful.
-to free up another, and that's going to, you know, now you're-
You're confusing parents all over again.
But, I mean, so there's not going to be a solution that doesn't have some impact. Like, even, even opening things up 10 minutes earlier.
It's going to cause, yeah, we'll, we'll hear about it.
People are going to be-
We'll hear about it, yep.
That's too early.
Yep, yeah, yep. But we got to get kids to school on time.
But that makes perfect sense, again, for the committee to look at for next year, whatever they call. We really could have gotten away with four high school buses because no one ever rides them. And that, that could be a way to-
Yeah, yeah.
Completely different routes for the high school than the other schools.
Okay. So, I think, I, I think that that's, that's good. I think that we should have this, definitely have this as an agenda topic at our next meeting. Just if it's, everything's say okay, it's, it's good to have as agenda topics, everything's say okay.
Yeah, I think it should, yeah.
If not, that we have an, everybody knows that we have a, we're continuing the discussion and there's an opportunity for more dialogue. If anyone has any suggestions or any, any other thoughts about this, please don't hesitate to contact our superintendent directly. Okay? That's why we've hired him, okay?
And they've done a good job of it, which is important.
Yeah, that's right, that's right.
Yeah, they've done a good job of it. And we've got, actually, we've got a lot of good, a lot of good feedback, too, and good ideas, which, you know, we've tried different things. It all, and a lot of positive, you know, thoughts, too. You know, we know, you know, we're working in this. What if you try this? So-
So, we're going to have a follow-up on the bus subcommittee?
Yeah, we'll bring it.
Are you going to, we're going to-
I think, yeah.
Let's bring it back to the next meeting and see where we're at.
Next meeting.
Hopefully, it, we want it rectified by the next meeting, which is on the, I think, the 23rd of September.
Yeah.
So, which is in two weeks.
Yeah.
So, let's see how this, this hopefully last change goes, and then we can go from there.
Yeah, okay, all right. Are you good with that? All right, so we'll move on to the next item for discussion, which is an update on the element, oh, no, it's, no, it's, I'm sorry. It's an elementary school enrollment.
Oh, no, school-
School project, okay. No, my eyes, my eyes jumped, jumped.
Yeah, we're getting there.
Okay. So, elementary school projects. So, we have successfully got the kids into the three elementary schools on time.
By the skin of our teeth.
By the skin of our teeth, with a little bit of compromises with not having the gym available at-
Niantic Center and Lily B. Haynes.
Yeah, yeah, just because of the moving logistics and the logistics of putting the basketball hoops up and-
Yep.
-then before painting the lines on the floor.
Exactly. So, that's, and that's what's exactly occurring over at Niantic Center right now. They can't, the floor's in, they can't paint it yet because they've got six hoops to put up, you know, in there. So, they're in the process of doing that, but they've got to have the ceiling, the ceiling tile and grids are already in, so it makes it a little bit more challenging.
Yeah.
But they're working on that. And Haynes, you know, same thing. It was allowed, the big gym over there, the main gym, was the last thing to be painted and cleaned up. So, in the process of, and put in the new lighting. So, in the process of getting that done. And the auxiliary gym is in process as well of being finished up. New wood floor is in there. So, that's, that's in process.
The auxiliary gym is open.
Oh, it is open? Oh, wow. Well, thanks, Melissa.
There's no basketball hoops up.
Okay, yeah.
Do you have, oh, good.
The P.E. teacher can use it if she wants.
Okay, so it's- How'd the floor come out? How's it look?
Beautiful, yeah. It's really nice.
Excellent.
Yeah. So, but outside of, you know, punchless items and, you know, the Flanders roof still
needs to be done. People drive by, you're seeing, you know, they're working on it every day right now. You know, our ribbon cutting ceremonies are scheduled for next week. We have the dates, the 16th, 17th. 16th is Niantic Center at 5:00, the 17th is Flanders at 5:00, and then Lily B. Haynes is on the 19th at 4:45, because we've got the building committee meeting that night at 6:00. We set those on purpose earlier, even with things, you know, still in process, to, to really push, you know, ONG to finish up what they need to finish up. Because they're gone at the end of this month. You know, Jovi, they're gone at the end of the month. So, they're all leaving. The trailers you're going to pull out, Flanders trailer will be pulling out this week.
What do you think they're done or not?
So, they've got punchless items, which will last through the year, but what is much done while they're all on site and that we can get, you know, finished? So-
Because there's still, there's still quite a bit.
There's still quite a bit.
You know, I mean, I know he has a punch list, but I've got punch lists, dude. There's a whole lot on there.
Yeah. Well, I, I must, I must say, when I, when I saw the lights in the parking lot at Niantic Center, I almost cried. I almost cried. And when I went into the Flanders gym and saw the new floor, I was abso, you and I, we almost, we almost hugged, you know, it was so, it was so moving. It was nice. And of course, and, and I think, I think Haynes and the cubbies that have been put in place and making that look more like an elementary school, just has a great feeling to it. And I think it's just, and so I, I, you know, and of course, and all the security, all the new doors and all the alarm systems and everything.
I liked the doors at Niantic Center. I drove by at night last night. All the lights were on. There were three doors. They had big lights over them. It was very cool. Can I just say that, Jamie? It was very cool. I was very emotional.
And please, when everybody walks into Niantic Center, you have to look up and see that the mold and the mildew and the green stuff growing, the skylight has been completely replaced. And it absolutely looks very, very nice. So.
We had one teacher that came into one of our meetings and she was talking about how she was cold and she had to bring a sweatshirt in September. And she, that's never happened before.
That's exciting. That's exciting.
We're working on that. Maybe we can, because we'd be quite that cold. But I think they-
I'll do cold.
She was appreciative of it. So.
How was the technology?
That's completely fair.
Because when I had gone through the Friday before they opened, so.
No, for Amy, an update on technology at elementary. Work in progress.
So, yeah, with the building opening, the Thursday before and the Friday before, all three buildings opening at the same time. You basically have the opening day of school at about 7:00, 2:00 to go. So, it was basically, can we get main office and, and a common area running? And then it's basically been tree-dodged. So, we don't have the capacity to meet that level of demand.
I got it. I promised I would ask. That's why I asked. The other question that I had was the outdoor areas. I had noticed that, not just Lily B. Haynes, and I had mentioned it at the last meeting, about the garbage containers which have been removed, the outhouses that have been removed, but the actual playing space on that line of that wing, where the creative wing is, where their, you know, their playground is, where there's a whole lot there that needs a whole lot of work. And I don't believe that it's the contractors that do it. I believe it's our district that needs to take care of it.
Yes. Actually, there was some emails floating around today about beginning some of that work to get that cleaned up. Melissa, I think, yeah, the creative-
So, we just got to, we got to stay on it. And then Flanders as well. And I had gone by Flanders. It was like a big mud pit in the back. So, I'm hoping, they had done a tremendous amount of work in the front. It was absolutely beautiful. Lots of landscaping and that kind of stuff. But in the back area, it was in need of a lot of attention and, you know, there's lots of different things. I just would hate to see our contractors disappear when things still need to be finished.
Yeah, absolutely. And sweeping, too. I mean, because there's, you know, there was so much activity.
Debris, yeah.
Nails, debris. We were concerned the first couple of days, we've been letting kids out to play at recess. So, we really kind of quarantined and contained until we could get some things cleaned up. So, you don't have a child fall on a nail or step on a nail or something along those lines. So, it was another piece. And one of the, the big things right now is we're working to, in the next building committee, we should have a clear picture and hopefully some final numbers of what we have left, you know. And I, I think we're going to be in the black at the end of, of the day.
Definitely.
Which is great news. We still have a couple of holdback items as well, that we're still hoping maybe to be able to do. So, we're going to talk about that on the 19th at the building committee meeting. And then the next board meeting, we should be talking about what we have left for, for dollars. So.
Yeah, but it's definitely looking positive.
Yeah, it is, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. In terms of, we're definitely going to be on budget for sure. And there may be some extra.
Yeah, which will be good. Jamie?
So, on the topic of landscaping, who is responsible for our landscaping? Because Lily B. Haynes has all that new beautiful landscaping out front.
Yep, yeah.
And then Niantic, we lost some bushes and trees up front, and we've got all these stumps everywhere.
Oh, getting replay, going in. They should have started this past weekend over there, because there's a whole landscaping plan as part of the projects. It just hadn't gotten, it hadn't gotten done yet.
Where the last-
In front of Niantic.
In front of Niantic along the side of the building.
So, I guess what I'm asking is, so all of that work that was done at Niantic, I mean, Lily B., when you drive by, you see all those overgrown flowers and trees and weeds. Who's responsible for all that overgrown stuff?
Like, who's it-
We are, we are now. Yeah, that's on us.
It's part of the operating budget.
So, it's going to be us who's going to be cleaning up that mess?
As we did at the very start of this year. We, yep, we had to clean it.
And there's a little bit of a learning there in terms of-
There is.
-in terms of landscaping and throttled back on some of the stuff for Niantic Center just because of, out of them.
We're trying to, yeah. We're working with Planning and Zoning. Planning and Zoning are getting involved. So, we're, we're working with them.
You're right.
But the more you put in, the more you got to take care of.
I mean, I'm not saying put it in. I'm saying, you've got these giant stumps, they need to come out. And if you're going to plant all of these grasses and trees and bushes, somebody needs to-
Somebody's got to take care of them.
Clean it up.
Yeah, that's right. So, we're trying to assess and design what is the least maintenance that we have to deal with, especially up at Niantic Center at the front there, because the huge arborities were all overgrown.
Those arborities took over everything.
They took over everything. So, we, we had to take them down. We have to dig out the stump still. That's on us. And then we need to decide what's going to go in around there.
And like, so in Niantic, all those trees that were cut down on the side of the road, who's, is that us, too?
Up top on those big trees, that was on them because it's electrical to run from the poles down to the generator.
So, are they going to fix the stumps? Are they leaving the stumps?
I don't, you know, we're going to find out. I'm not sure if they're going to remove those or if we're going to get stuck with that. So.
The zoning officer is on, as I can-
Yeah, he is. Yeah, Bill Mahoney is, yep.
This came up at the zoning commission. This was part of the plan that they submitted.
Yeah.
And they're responsible for taking care of it. And they also cut down things that they were not supposed to. So, the zoning officer, Bill Mahoney, is supposed to be meeting with ONG.
Wow.
And I don't think that, in my opinion, I think that's on them. That was part of the plan that they submitted. And they're, they're responsible for it.
Yeah.
And I think that he's going to, this was, as I said, was discussed at zoning. I think he's going to insist that they replant, that they bring in new plantings for the trees that they cut down that they were not supposed to.
Yeah, that's what he told me as well, Roseanne. He's, he's working, Chris Lunn is working with him, you know, closely, Bill, and, you know, we're making sure. Because come to find out, too, for our temporary COs, you know, that's something that Bill Mahoney needed to be involved in as well, for the, for the landscaping component.
Right.
I, I didn't know that.
I mean, I drive by Niantic every day, so I see that one most.
Yeah, yeah. So, Bill's been great, though. He worked with us.
They're naked with all the trees and bushes gone.
So, yeah, yeah.
But that was definitely part of the site plan that they submitted.
Yep.
And inexcusable for them to cut down the other healthy trees that they weren't supposed to. So, that should be, that should be on them. There will be on them to replace those as opposed to being bored of that expense.
Okay, yeah.
Is there another chance officials on that, too? Excuse me?
Yeah.
Mr. Mahoney, she said.
Yeah. There's utility poles, new utility poles that went up there. So, some of that was they needed to remove those trees to get the utility poles. And again, that's what I was told. See, right, Roseanne, we need to look at, you know, they should be responsible if it's part of, you know, the, the projects, they should be removed, the stumping, stumps and clean it up and add a new trees.
You mentioned that we are obviously going to come in on or under budget with the project. And I'm looking forward to Thursday, you know, see what we learn. But just that doesn't include a big chunk of furniture that we had to pull out of it to do other things, right? So, we're coming in, getting the building done, but we're not delivering the plan that we, we wanted, yeah.
I am hoping that, I'm hoping, I'm hoping that the big pieces are going to come together.
Yeah.
I, I, we're just about, we're just about there. We got, we just got to let the process kind of work itself to, to an end. And I think that, I think I'm optimistic that we're going to basically come out with everything that we wanted and, and, and all the surprises that we had during the, the process of renovating three very much-needed, much-needed improved schools.
We're going to have that.
That we will have that covered as well. Because we did have some very large contingency dollars baked into the equation for the, for the entire project. So, but you just have to kind of, got to go methodically through these steps and make sure that we have the right numbers before we can really add them all up. So, that's, that's it. So, hopefully the building committee meeting next week will be a very important, one of the very important steps. So, good.
Jeff, Jeff-
I'm sorry, yeah.
Jeff, what's the timing of the basketball hoops at the second gym in Lily B.? Will it be done by the end of the month?
They, yeah, we should talk about the, you know, the, I wasn't sure when the East Line Youth Basketball was looking to release a check or, what's that?
Whenever you need it.
Okay, all right, good. Yeah, so I think they've already been ordered. So, I don't know when they're, they're going in. And, oh, Melissa, have you heard anything about the hoops in the auxiliary gym? Because I, I was told they were ordered, but I don't know when they're-
I was told they're on order.
Okay, all right. So, I'll look into it and find out.
Before they leave, so they put it up, right, at ONG?
So, we got the guys to paint the lines.
Yeah, well, they did the lines in that gym.
Oh, they did the lines?
They had to do the lines in that gym, yeah.
Oh, they did, so, oh, okay.
They did the lines in that gym, but they have not over at Niantic Center. So, well, but it's a little bit easier because you just have the tubes.
You can, yeah.
And that's it, one on either end. So, it's pretty straightforward because it's just a big box.
But they're going to come from the ceiling.
Yeah, yeah. Or attached, attached to the walls, I believe.
Walls, okay.
So, I think so. Yeah, I got to, yeah, let me look at when they're going to be arriving.
I've learned so much about basketball hoops in the last two months.
Yeah.
Because that's a long gym.
Yeah, it's not, yeah, it's-
Narrow and, yeah.
Yeah, so I thought we were going to get them from the ceiling.
I'll check with them again.
Yeah.
Maybe they were. You might be right, Eric. I might be thinking of events.
Yeah, I think you're-
Shouldn't be that expensive.
No, you might, you might be right. Yeah, because it's, it's, you can raise them and lower them for height-wise and then-
You should be able to lift them, especially if you want, like, long.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
Yep, good. Yeah, because we talked about the electric winches. Yeah, that's right. Yep, you're right.
Anything else on the project? So, next week, so the ribbon cutting or all that stuff, please-
Yeah.
Everybody who can, please attend every one of the things. And you get to walk around and check out all the facilities and, and it's-
I have a question, actually, the open houses. Are they going to be open to the public to come in and look around?
Ribbon cuttings or open houses?
I meant ribbon cutting.
Okay, just want to be clear which one.
Are they going to be, so, but are we going to have security in the buildings to supervise?
Yes, we've already talked to Chris Olson. We're going to have a security person in the building. What I'm hesitant of doing, because we did get a call from, you know, a community member today. We didn't know the individual. Heard about it. He said, "Are you putting it in the paper?" Or, "Security-wise, I feel like we want to put it out to our parent community and all the town members." But I'm a little hesitant to put it out publicly a community member today. We didn't know the individual. Heard about it. He said, are you putting it in the paper or you? Security-wise, I feel like we want to put it out to our parent community and all the town members. But I'm a little hesitant to put it out publicly that much because of security purposes. Again, we'll have the security person there wandering around. But yeah, we were just gonna let people, you know, filter through. And then the security person would do a sweep of the building at the end of the night in each, in each building. So each building will have a security person for that, that entire night. Okay?
Thank you.
Okay, excellent question. Excellent. Okay, next item up under instruction is, for discussion is the 2019-20 elementary field experiences. Yeah, so this is a follow-up. From the end of last year, we said we would be bringing this back at the, the very beginning of the year. We, I'm gonna kind of turn it over to Amy to kind of share out information because she had gathered quite a bit from, you know, the teachers and at each grade level as to what their level of interest was as pertains to field experiences. So Amy, turn it over to you.
One of the things, we started the conversation at the board level based on one particular experience that seemed to happen within our grade level at the elementary, which has caused me to go back because the board actually approved on February 26th of 2018 a policy and a regulation in regards to field trips and what the expectations are. So what I've been trying to do is figure out how are we, because the regulation is really the how, that we bring the policy to life. So one of the things I did, and I just posted it in there so that you could see is the actual regulation that the board approved and sort of the guidelines that are there in regards to our field experiences. And I think the biggest one is the one that Ariana and I are working on is that we are to have a separate, basically budget line item for field experiences. That it is under a regulation that expenses for trips will be paid by us as a board of education and procedures will be developed at the administrative level. So obviously in a fiscal sort of realm, that needs to be integrated in a phased process because obviously, I mean, we just approved it to Mexico. So, you know, we're not going to be able to fiscally support elementary, middle, as well as high, all at the same time within our budget. Some other conversations that we had is beginning at the elementary level, identifying and brainstorming those grade level teams, what some of those experiences would be. I think it's really important is that within your regulation, you also have that those trips would be confined within a school day. That's the expectation of those within Connecticut and the experiences other students have. So one of the things that after a string board meeting, I sort of send out the email to elementary teachers, they have a brainstormed list, and I'm gonna call it a brainstorm list as far as experiences that they feel could be, either be community-based experiences that they work with their PTAs on and/or field experiences that tie to the curriculum. So where we are in regards to that now is it really, I think what we need to do is we need to turn around. We need to do a level of education on the actual board policy and the regulation that you passed and really turn around and have a conversation in regards to that and sort of where we want it to lie. But I think from the elementary perspective, one of the things that the administrators and I have spoken about is also we need to give some administrative constraints in regards to what we expect. So that grade levels will know how they would agree on what experiences that we want to ensure for grade level. So one of the things that we talked about was two field experiences per grade level for K to four. And then in addition to that, I am very close to finalizing a partnership with Star Wars Theater because that was one consistent experience. That was on every K to four brainstorm list as far as a partnership. So that would be something separate. What I am doing, just because of the air of sort of the phase-in and how quick our teachers have to come back and get, I am phasing in certain conversations right now so that we can sort of have them in a sequential order and not just hit them with all of these things as they're trying to get structure and disturb rooms and stuff that's ready for them to be teaching in. So as far as I'm concerned, my next step is sort of where we are in the conversation that we've had also at the middle school is Lyndon Astley, the science team leader, has also had conversations at the middle school level in regards to a certain, the nature of classroom experience that was once at the elementary level and integrating that into the middle school experience. Our middle school currently allows one field experience currently per grade level. So one of the conversations we've been having is, well, if we were to do something like that, how does this, what does that impact? Right? So now my kids not go, aren't these great now not going to Boston because they're doing this? And how does it tie to curriculum? So to me, that is a larger conversation that needs to be had. And it's one I'm choosing to have with, we had talked about the science committee and now it's moving to more of a middle school-specific team leader conversation and content-specific. I really feel like within the field experience, it has to be tied to curriculum. I really feel that teachers are the ones who get to choose what those experiences are because they're the one teaching that curriculum. And I think the consistency across the three schools is pretty key. That if we're gonna offer a grade one experience to, I'll give you Scott's Farm, is what I've got today. Why are we going there? What's the connection to the curriculum? And are we providing that opportunity across all three schools to our first graders? So that's some of the work and conversation that we're having now. And there continue to be follow-up on it because it's, we're implementing, you know, it's a study and things of that nature. We have to have a conversation with the experiences at the same time. I feel really comfortable with teachers. And like I said, we currently, we have them work across three schools within the spring. And what we propose is have them come back together again and make some commitments to those experiences so that they're curriculum-related. With some rumors from us. So that's just sort of a follow-up as far as where we are.
Thanks, Eric.
Could you just clarify, because you mentioned something about what we just approved, the trip to Mexico. How does that play into our poli, are you saying we're, we approve something that's not in line with our policy?
No, so one of the things we have to do is, is part of our policy regulations is we have to determine sort of the administrator parameters in regards to those trips. So one of the conversations, a lot of the conversations I've had, to use large example of the second conversation, the third of it, is where do those trips lie? Do those lie as part of our core curriculum or do those lie as part of elective courses? I've had the same conversation with science. It's like, where, where are those experiences? Where are they living? And if they're a key part of our core curriculum, of course, we need to accept that because we're not them. So one of the things.
And this, sorry, so is that because of our policy, we need to revise it or is it a wrong Connecticut policy or something?
That, that's just if we're ensuring and connecting the experience to our curriculum. Because we're saying that that's an experience that's a part of our curriculum.
So take the Bermuda trip, right, for marine biology, which is right square and apart, right? So, I don't, so you're saying we, we would have to fund the Bermuda trip?
So that would be approved by Jeff. Jeff would decide, so based on your regulation, what financial support would be sought in order for participants to be able, so Jeff can approve that the participants have to pay all of it. He can approve, that's the way our regulation moves now. He can say, yes, well, the board will pay half, then you pay half. So it's a, it's a, it's up to, and it has to be incorporated into the approved budget. And it's really something that you as a board need to think about. And we as an administrative team need to think about because all those experience should be tied to the units of study that we're teaching. So that's really something that I think for us needs to be discussed more at the administrable. I think we need to phase it in because it's too, it's too big of a responsibility. And the other.
And I don't want to lose it.
No, no.
Because they're gonna experience this.
That's the problem. And that's one of the things we've been talking about too, is even how do you sort of build up to different experiences? So like one of the topics we've had is like at the elementary level, if you did two per grade level. And then if you're moving to the middle school, we keep it the one, well, maybe the one is always an extended day experience. So you get to get home at seven, eight, nine o'clock at night because your experience is larger because you're at middle school. Yeah, exactly, right? Right? So, and then where does it leave sort of at the high school level? And then, and a part of this conversation has also come from high school teachers in regards to transportation issues. You know, am I supposed to go now and get a license because I'm driving my van of fifteen kids to this experience? And now that's a requirement of me. And so I guess we have to honor that some staff, you know, feel as though some learning and experiences just happen within the walls of our buildings.
Yeah.
So.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes.
So building off of that, I'm just trying to figure out in terms of like figuring out where the, like, funding for trips is coming from, it depends on like where it falls in terms of if it's supplementing the curriculum. Jeff is ultimately deciding if it's gonna be exclusively coming from board of ed budget or students or PTAs or families.
Yeah, local or internal in your regulation is all expenses for such trips will be paid by the board of education if all procedures are followed. That's local or internal?
So that would be the difference, say, between the Bermuda trip and nature's classroom, correct?
Right. Oh, local could be like Scott's Farm. So we're gonna pay our kids' first graders to go to Scott's Farm. Because we feel that that ties into their science curriculum as well as it's a good writing-based experience for them because they develop templates across the three schools. Right? So we decide that that's a good experience. So that's something that we as a board feels a good thing because our kids are getting out into the community, which is tied to our curriculum. It's local and internal in nature. So that's something that in our regular, in our regulation is saying we are funding.
We're funding exclusively.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
And then you're saying ultimately it comes down to the teachers to determine which of those trips they want.
Yeah, I feel it's important that our grade level teachers should have the opportunity to talk because they're the ones teaching that curriculum, saying, what's gonna enhance this curricular experience for our kiddos? Let's do some amazing trip for science this year and let's do another one for math. And then the following year, they turn around and they say, nope, we want to hone in on this. I feel like teachers should decide that experience because it's meant to enhance and provide that hands-on experience to them. And then for me, where, where it's different, where the line's drawn, because there's also the PTA conversation, is our PTAs have done a great job at supporting us fiscally, but within our updated policy, some of this needs to fall on us a little bit because this is what we're saying is part of that experience. And that's not to say, like, I don't know, one PTA, for example, is hosting a bunch of guest speakers. That's great. That's what they should be doing within their buildings or their hosting. Scott's could come to us. Maybe the PTA hosts a Scott's and then in their school, a PTA hosts, great. So those are things where that can be. And I try to go to each PTA in the falls that I can visit and talk about these things and they can ask me questions like this. But I think for me, it's more we have a policy and regulation that I know we need to, we need to hone in on, drive this conversation.
Yeah, you know, the whole high school piece is, I turned and saw Ms. Hardy and I'm like, she has these two fantastic trips that I, we can't get rid of those things.
Right, no.
Right.
But we also can't fund them.
Right.
And I don't know how we resolve that, but.
Well, I'm thinking that we pull the policy.
Yeah, we have to.
We need to have the policy.
Yeah, we have to look at that because.
Is that?
I just want to say.
Or no?
I, no, it's the regulation. The policy committee does not set the regulation. The policy committee sets the policy. The regulation is the rules that the superintendent comes up with to enforce the policy.
Your out-of-state regulation is basically in justice.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's out of the country that we bring to.
It's really a way of reasons you want it.
Yeah.
But for the middle school, we allow, we fund our school trips like Boston and other places.
No.
No.
Part of it.
We can, we can.
There's a combo.
For the bus, but I think for.
There's a significant, I recall a significant fee, I just feel like.
I thought that's for the bus.
Local and internal.
Part of, what is she talking about? Part of the, the act of implementation of the regulations.
We haven't had one yet.
Okay.
That's, yeah.
Okay.
Some, some people are paying for the bus.
In front here, has to have one.
We need to pay that.
Yeah.
Barbara?
I think, you know, we have to make a distinction between, there's a distinction in what Amy is saying between a field experience and a field trip.
Right.
Right?
Okay.
A field experience is something that is linked directly to that grade level's curriculum or that course's curriculum that we're saying every kid who takes, is in that grade or every kid, if we did it at the high school, every kid who's in that course must have this experience. So there are a lot of things that we do at the high school, and this has been my complaint since I got on the board, that we offer at the high school a lot of field trips. They're not field experiences. Because if they were field experiences, they would be tied to the curriculum and every kid who takes that course should be required to have it. So for instance, if we have this trip to Mexico that we just approved, if we said that this was a field experience that every fourth-year Spanish student must have, then we would have to pay for it. But that isn't what we're talking about. All of those things that we do at the high school are field trips which are open to kids. Yours is it?
Yeah.
Did they all go? Every one of them?
I can't comment. You have to refer to Mr. Susie.
How many?
But I don't have that hat on to know.
That's right.
Kay, she's the first select woman.
Okay, so by rights, if, if we require that every kid that takes that course must do the trip, we should be paying for it.
Right.
It's a slippery slope. We could say you don't require it, but you're really, to get the full effect, I mean, Ms. Hardy's class is the greatest class in school, right?
And every teacher would say that.
Yeah, so in order to get the full effect, to get the full effect of those classes, you need to go to the Model UN. You need to go to the Model Congress because that's.
Well, you're just making my argument, which is then we should pay for it because there are kids that probably don't go because they can't afford it.
But my concern would be is we end up, we don't, can't afford it and we cut the budget and we lose that class that all these kids are gonna be great experiences for.
Well, then we have to.
So we have to figure that out. That's the problem.
Right, we have to find a way.
Gotta look at them one by one.
Then we would have to find a way to fund those children who can't afford it.
That's right, yep.
Kay, just that. Also, some experience has been swooped in and then they get put, they've been categorized that have historically been funded by PTAs or fundraising and that type of thing. Which, yeah, that's, that's what we're, you know, talking about as far as one specific. And it's, it's a little bit unfair.
Yeah, very difficult. That's right.
Well.
So what's our next step from here?
You read my mind.
I'm sorry, just like we need to get some closure, so outline on this.
So you're, so you're not.
Amy has got the ball, right.
No, I, no, I mean it. Like, this is not an easy conversation.
It's a work in progress.
I mean, you have to think about it to get, you have to get the elementary grade level teachers back together. I need to have them talk about the two field experiences that they want to do. I am literally operating off of a fiscal logic that I've never had to implement before. So I'm gonna say every grade level gets X number of dollars in regards to, I don't know if it's gonna work. I also will not enter into the conversation with middle school until I did this, did it work? I mean, how did it feel? Did we feel as though that was a good hands-on experience to them? So I sort of am starting the conversation with elementary. And then I feel like we're probably gonna have to, based on the experience, go back within the regulation and have conversations based on our experience that we have here. But you're not gonna get closure.
So what do you need from us right now?
Nothing. I just, I need time with people.
Well, and support. We think, we believe that this is good to be working on.
I said that, I said, I'm gonna follow up at the fall, so I might have to follow up with that.
Okay.
But this is not a light conversation.
Okay, Bill and, yeah, I'm sorry, who was first?
Do you want to go?
I think it doesn't matter, go ahead.
Okay. So we had talked at the AAA about if we were experience-based, like if that's what we would support, experience-based. My district's really away from experiences. And my thought is on that is because of the money. That's, that's what I'm. And I feel like the experiences that we offer here are pretty impressive, to be honest with you. And I, sometimes I actually think that it's one of the things that helps us, put us above. Because there are a lot of districts that don't do those things. And regardless of whether or not we're providing the budget or if money's coming in from PTAs, I mean, that, that's really what a PTA is, is that we're working together to help bring different experiences to, you know, to our students. So I would really hate to, first of all, I do, and I have said since the beginning, that, that each elementary school should be doing the same things when you're talking about academics, academic programs, those types of things, right? And yes, you know, having similar experiences, but not taking away certain things that, you know, that they have participated in. And granted, with the changes that we've made over the five years or more, we are gonna lose some things, right? But to lose some of the things that possibly could be coming our way, it, it really could affect a lot of different opportunities. So I, I want to navigate very carefully. That's why I, I actually like the conversation a lot. I mean, I understand that it's hard and I'm okay to have those hard conversations because I want to have the best result. I really do, you know? And I understand that some things we, we may have to either lose or maybe it won't look the same, but we'll still have it. And then, you know, all, you know, certain students, whether or not it's the fourth grade outdoor classroom or not, that they all can have that experience, you know? So I'm up for the hard conversations. It's just having it and doing it the right way and really having all the input, you know, from people, respecting people's, you know.
Yeah, I mean, there was one parent said to me, you know, whoa, okay, so the old things we've done for a number of years, what are the new and exciting things that we might be able to now bring into the equation, you know, as well?
I get excited when I think of that fourth grade particular experience to be opened up for all fourth graders or because there have been students that haven't been able to participate in something like that that I think that they would have benefited from. I think that's a great opportunity. And then to thought of it being lost or, you know, I suppose I could absorb it to be different. But to lose it, that's a big deal, that's a big deal, so.
We also should be able to have teachers that are willing to chaperone and guide that experience.
And there's where the difference comes in, I think, yeah.
It's a workday as a certain.
It's a workday, yes.
Yeah.
So there's that responsibility sometimes also on us, their personal one. Where, where does that begin and end in that?
Agreed. And know the profession, like.
Bill?
I, I, Candace pointed out that this, this had come up with AAA and so I was gonna remind folks, it is incredibly complicated issue because there are many factors. If we're looking at the high school thing, we're talking about families who can't afford to go and don't get to go and trying to make all that work. We're talking about, as a high school teacher, I think that you cannot, you cannot take these trips away. I agree that they are critical, they're life-changing for kids and they're super high motivators. So your point of trying to transition some of them into the budget or however we're doing, we have to find a solution to not lose these. And we have to find a way to not let the kids who, or families who can't afford to pay be able to still get the experience. To complicate matters more, we got the three different elementary schools who had wonderful programs but were unique. And now we're trying to look at those and say, well, let's keep, you know, let's try to see what we can keep and try to make sure that the other two get to experience the great thing that this one was experiencing. But, you know, incredibly complicated and it's gonna be hard work. But I, I will work hard to not lose our trips because I think that they are what makes school fun and make a big difference.
Actually, that was a quote given by our administration. That is often tense with our students, remember?
Yeah, that's right.
In an ideal world, I mean, I've been a teacher, but in an ideal world, we've been offered an experience with every single unit of study.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Kids don't say, oh yeah, remember that chapter three test?
Ryan, did you wanna add something?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I appreciate the effort of kind of, especially in the elementary schools, of kind of coordinating and making the curriculum more uniform. I think the concept of having the teachers and, and the sort of the curriculum teams leading, especially when we're talking about, well, really, all, all of the experiences and trips, but, but especially the experiences, you know, when we're saying, no, this is part of our curriculum, let's, you know, certainly we need to give them the opportunity to define that, and come together and make sure that, you know, that we do that across the schools. And, you know, I think, I think the mantra is more, you know, equivalent experiences, maybe not identical, but, because every school may wanna do it. There, there may be slight variations, and, you know, because we may not all be able to go to the same place, because, you know, it may overwhelm them. But, but I'm excited to see, I guess it's more, what I'm hearing is it's a little bit more of a phased approach. We start with the curriculum, start with the teachers, what do you want, you know, because ultimately they are, they're leading, and then, say, what cost, and then kind of start to look at that. But, but I agree, you know, if you can find creative ways to, 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 I suggest donations, I don't know, you know, is there other ways to raise some funds, maybe not specifically for your student, but for the overall enterprise? Because we have very supportive of this, of our students, and, you know, so I'm, I'm hesitating, I understand where we're coming from by saying it's a private curriculum, we should do it. And I agree with you, send me, I do work about the repercussions of, to figure out that, so, so I'm interested in the conversation.
Good. Yep. Okay. Bell, so, Amy, you got the ball. So, okay, all right. Okay, next item, elementary school enrollment for this year.
Yes, I wanted to bring this back to the table, it was from our last meeting. I told you I would bring some costs associated with adding in a kindergarten teacher, you know, at Niantic Center. We also talked about a point five, bless you, a point five special education teacher at Haynes, the need for that, and then some additional par support for the, the other two, the other two schools at the kindergarten level. So, I wanted to bring those numbers forth, because there's some expense, clearly, with, with adding in staffing. So, the teacher alone, you know, sits with, with insurance at about, you know, seventy-nine thousand, almost eighty thousand dollars. And then each par professional added in sits at about eighteen thousand eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars. So, when you add up one teacher, as well as, now, we would, we talked last time about, before we talked about the Niantic Center, and adding in a, an additional kindergarten teacher, we talked about six pairs. The proposal now would be, you know, the, the one teacher at Niantic Center, and then four pairs, to help offset at Flanders and Haynes. Total cost of a hundred and ninety-three thousand nine thirty-five. How do we come up with that money, is why we're bringing this back to the table tonight, because we just, we don't have that in our budget. So, here's how we're estimating, but there's still a deficit, as I mentioned too, with busing, you know, that's a whole nother element, too. Spiral funds, we've used to cover the cost of a world language elementary teacher, every year for the last four, five years, we no longer have that teacher, so we have some funds available there. Total is about forty thousand dollars, so we would apply that forty thousand dollars, rather than hiring, you know, the world language teacher, because we're studying that, and Amy's working on the committee for that. We would use that, and then Mariana has worked diligently last April, she switched over in vendors and natural gas. So, we're using a different natural gas company now. We've tracked over the summer, the bills that have been coming in, significantly less than the previous vendor, got better rates. We project a savings of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars over the course of the year. That's a projection, and we don't know what kind of winner we're gonna have either. Last winner was a fairly mild winner. If we get walloped, that could, you know, hurt a little bit, but we project a hundred and twenty-five. So, put those two numbers together, a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. So, if you apply the hundred and sixty-five to the one hundred and ninety-three, we're left with a deficit of twenty-eight thousand nine hundred and thirty-five dollars that we don't have, to help offset the costs of one teacher, as well as four par professionals, now, to cover the needs. And let me preface, Niantic Center had another student added last week, so each kindergarten class is at twenty-three students now. The other two schools remain, and their kindergarten numbers at twenty. And then I said, that, I think it was last meeting, the meeting before, my recommendation was anything over, you know, if we go beyond the twenty mark, then we really should be considering, you know, adding in the, you know, the teacher. So, yeah, so, that's where we're, that's where we're at. So, twenty-eight thousand nine thirty-five is the, is the deficit. So, open it up for discussion, but, you know, if you, if you want, I'll just throw it out there, the number, you know, three kindergarten teachers, because that's probably gonna be somebody's question, you know, you're looking at, with the point five special education teacher that we need to add in, that's two hundred and seventy-six thousand six hundred, six hundred and ninety-five dollars. Much bigger number than, you know, a hundred and ninety-three. Jamie?
So, I had emailed already, Jeff, my concerns before I'm bringing them to everybody else. My concern is the kindergarten numbers across the board, not just Niantic, but Lilyby, Haynes, and Flanders. I, I honestly don't believe that our kindergartens should have twenty kids in them. I don't think it's equitable for the kindergarteners, starting out their education, to be in the classroom with twenty or more kids. As we know, that these kids are, some of them are four, some of them are five, six, seven, some of them have never been in a structured setting, some of them have never been in school, some of them have done playgroups, some of them have needs that need to be addressed that we didn't know about. And I don't feel that they are going to get the same educational experience as our current students, that they've received, and that they've gotten, being in a class of twenty or more. I know that that number, for three kindergarten teachers, is huge, and I know the Board of Finance didn't do us any favors this year. But I don't think it is equitable or fair to our staff, our parents, our, our students, to not do three kindergarten teachers across the board. And I know it hurts, and it's gonna hurt, and we are gonna need to find it somewhere, but I think that would be the more fair equitable option for everyone involved.
Amy?
I could support it. I mean, we really, our numbers, they used to be so scattered, and, I mean, it's, it's good that they're, they're all looking larger, but we keep getting larger. And I knew at Niantic Center that that was gonna happen, just because I feel like we have a huge mental base right there, and it's just, it's consistent. And it's consistently growing everywhere, and it's interesting, when Mrs. Hardy was talking about the new projects in town, I often go through town, and there are a tremendous amount of projects that are coming, and they will affect each one of the elementary schools, each, each district. So, phases that are literally going up right now, and then new ones that are, that are coming. So, I just think that we're gonna, we're gonna consistently see the growth. And I know that they're on the fence. I mean, we put that, that commitment for class size in, what, how many years ago?
Four.
Two. Yeah, first year of Jefferson.
Yeah, and it was a fight to get it going, from what I recall. Yeah, and I, and I'm really proud that we had done that, but, you know, that could stand to get taken like that.
Yep, no, right.
Unfortunately, we can't predict the ages of the students that are gonna be coming in.
It is, it's so difficult, yeah, and they're, yeah, they're growing.
We're talking about a lot of units.
Yeah. Eric, did you wanna, did you wanna say something?
Actually, just one clarification, to my understanding, you could support, I mean, which one could you, because I think-
All the teachers' class.
Having three.
Yeah.
So, here's, I mean, I think we all would, you know, ideally, it would be three, three teachers and everything, but when you look at the cost, it would be in a deficit of a hundred and eleven thousand, if we go to three, plus the bus is gonna be twenty K, give or take.
The way we need the money.
And I, I know where we're gonna get the money, which is exactly what I said we're not going to do, which is free supplies again.
That's what we would have to do.
We did it for two, past two years?
Yeah.
Past two years. Due to health insurance, yeah.
And, you know, every, every action has a, has a, yeah, and, and that's my concern. So, I don't, I really don't wanna do that. So, if we can figure out a way, so I'm worried that the savings for natural gas of a hundred and twenty-five thousand, that's, we're betting on something we have no control over, which is the weather.
Yeah.
So, that hundred and twenty-five could turn into thirty or forty, I mean, we have some in the bank, you know, quote-unquote, in the bank already, but it could, it could be reduced. So, that hundred and eleven plus twenty is a hundred and thirty, let's just say we're off by another twenty, we're at a hundred and fifty thousand.
Well, we could be off on the busing, too.
And we could be off on the busing, might be more than twenty thousand, because we haven't negotiated yet. So, I'm just, if we could figure out quickly, someone could say, here's a path where we could get to three, and not with less impact than having the three, you know, of not having the three kindergarten teachers, if that makes sense, in terms of the trade-off. I personally am not willing to touch supplies, we did it for two years, I, I don't wanna do that again. And then I don't know where else we go. So, that's my concern. I, I support the hiring a teacher at Niantic Center for paras, and, and seeing if anything changes over the next, I mean, hopefully, somewhat settled, probably, but that's where I would be.
And, please, did you, did I see?
Yeah, I mean, I'll just, I already shared the story in FFO today, but I'll echo it now here, for group. My concern in, like, I initially was on board with, like, the idea of one teacher and then four paras. My concern is kind of related to what Candice was sharing, in that I don't want to hire additional paras as like a stopgap for this year, and then just see enrollment increase in, like, in following years, and need to hire these teachers anyways. And I would also need to be very clear on the support and professional development that our par professionals are receiving, in order to, like, say, yes, that's going to be what's best for kids, versus actually hiring another certified teacher.
You know, I was thinking about, about it, and Jeff's obviously kept me, kept me appraised almost daily on his thinking, and things are going on, but, you know, we put together the guideline on class size, you know, there was so, we had a lot of passion around that, and, and I commend Jeff for, and, and the board for saying, when we went over that twenty number, nobody flinched and said, look, it's a must, we have to add another, another teacher into Niantic, and I think that's absolutely right. I just always come back and just say, what's the most important thing? Is it, is it small class size at the kindergarten, and first grade levels, and second grade, or something, or what else? What's more important than having the kids get off to the right start at, at that level? Now, you can have a big discussion about, can you create, in a classroom, with twenty kids, or twenty-one kids, or whatever the number is, twenty, with the right level of paras, the right trained paras, and all, and all of that, with, with an elementary teacher, and the right mix of kids, can you get the, the equivalent experiences, having an elementary teacher with a little bit of par support, and fifteen kids? I bet you, you probably can. But on the flip side, the probability that you're going to not hit that is, is a little, is higher, and so you run that risk, just like-
It feels, it feels risky.
Risky, yeah, that's, yeah.
It doesn't work, but-
Yeah. So, that's why, that's why, that's why I come, I come back, and I kinda, I'm right on that, right on that fence with, with, with the thing. I, I totally agree with Eric on, on the budget constraints, you know, and we have communicated to the Board of Finance, and the entire town, that, look, we're, you know, we'll get six hundred thousand, we'll get, we'll get another six hundred people crammed into the middle school, and start arguing about, about what's most important, but, you know, so I, you know, so it's a tough, it's a really tough call. I, I do believe that if our principals, with, working with our teachers, believe that they can make the right experience, because they got the right mix of kids and all that stuff, they can make it work with a kindergarten teacher, and an elementary, and, and the right par support, with, with twenty kids in the classroom, you know, I can, I could, I could, I can live with that. If you come back and you say, yeah, it's too risky, I can, I can understand that. So, it's tough, it's a really tough call. I, I always come back to this, whereas, when we went, hit twenty-three, to me, it's an, that's a no, that was a no-brainer, that was a no-brainer.
It's a no-brainer, yeah.
So, that's kind of, not very helpful thinking, but that's-
There's one other element with this, too, I mean, you look at, you know, like, Flanders and Niantic Center are pretty crammed for, their classrooms are smaller. Haynes has some pretty big classrooms over there, so it's, it's more spread out. Haynes has a lot of, all of our specialization programs running, too. So, there are kids that come in and out of, kindergartners that come in and out of those, those rooms as well, over there. So, it, at times, does lessen the total population of kindergarten students. I mean, there is always the thought that, the problem, it would provide an inequity, but if, you know, if you added it in at Flanders and Niantic Center, a kindergarten teacher, but didn't do it at Haynes, the, I think you're, you're, it's an inequity, you know, you'd have fifteen, fifteen in, in those two schools, and then you'd have the twenty.
And we've already seen that, we've already seen with that type of inequity.
We've seen the inequity, I know, yeah. It's just, I wanna make sure all the cards are on the table, you know, Haynes is a bit of a different animal, in that sense, that, you know, they do have the space and the bigger rooms over there.
Yeah. I can't, hands will up, well, let's see, Jill hasn't spoken yet, so, on the stop.
I guess what the question is, is, bottom line, it goes down to funding. So, when do we make the decision? I mean, how do we go about finding that money? And let's say we slice and dice our budget, then what at that point do we go to the Board of Finance and say, we need to provide, you know, to me, as a, as a parent, I would say, I'm more concerned about the quality of education, so when do you, how can we work with you to fund these three positions, these, well, three extra, three extra positions that we need? So, I guess is, what are the steps, and what do we need to do? What's, what's stopping us from holding back and doing the three paras? The, the teacher and the four paras? I just want, I feel like, to me, the stopgap for me personally is the funds. If you give me a creative, creative, a creative result as to where we're gonna get the money, then I, hey, I'd rather have teachers than paras. So, on when it's money?
Yeah, which we don't, we don't have, you know, a hundred and eleven thousand.
The Board of Finance, I mean, what is the, what is-
Well, it's so early in the year still, I mean, we're in the third week of school, we could have special ed concerns, like we did last year, you know, we, we ran over, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars in special ed last year.
And we have to get that this year, too.
And I think if we, if we run into problems later in the year, I think you, you package it up, and you bring it to the Board of Finance and say, hey, here's the issues we've had, we had higher kindergarten numbers, or, you know, we, special ed issues, whatever it might be, we need a special appropriation.
So, we continue to work within our own budget, that we have right now. Just a note, okay.
Jamie?
So, our regulation says kindergarten is eighteen.
Guidelines, yeah.
It says it's eighteen for kindergarten.
Fifteen to eighteen.
And speaking with parents in the kindergarten across the district, Niantic parents got the letter Friday, that they were, the search for a new teacher was on. And I got a lot of comments to me about, well, that really stinks, because now my child has gotten accustomed to this classroom-
That's a real issue, yeah.
-and the students, and now how do they decide how to split it?
Yep.
So, but my problem is, is I don't want us to say no to the other teachers, and just do paras, and then, a month from now, we find out, it's not going to work, and we do need to hire the extra teachers, and now we're a month into school-
And it's even worse.
And it's even harder to split the kids in the classrooms, and disrupt their schedules.
Yeah, you gotta do it now, we, you gotta make, rip the band-aid off, either do it or don't do it now, we can't wait, you know, any longer.
Well, that's what I'm saying, you can't, you can't sit on this one, this is something we have to do, because, like I said, the kindergartners are just, this is their first school experience, and this is going to build their blocks for whether or not they have successful careers in education or not. So, how we're going to treat them in kindergarten is how they're going to view- So how we're going to treat them in kindergarten is how they're going to view school going forward. So I'd like to give these kids and their parents the best experience that we can give them now, not two months from now, three months from now, four months from now.
Okay, Bill?
No, I, I, I was, I'm glad you brought that up, because I remember the number being less than twenty. And I, I don't know, I don't have the data memorized, but, you know, in the years that we've been looking at this data, I thought our kindergarten classes were in the seventeen or less range for several years, if I remember correctly. And I think that's pretty significant to, you know, be running a class of seventeen or less versus, you know, plus twenty-plus, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three. I think that's pretty significant. And I, and, you know, again, I haven't looked at any studies recently, but I, I gotta believe that if we were to even track our own kids in this school, that we probably have some kids who got off to a good start because they were in class X with, you know, thirteen kids in their kindergarten class. So, it's, I don't wanna freeze the supplies either, but I don't like the idea of plus twenty in kindergarten. Would, would any of the elementary principals that are here wanna say anything?
Melissa, Jeff, I mean, any, Linda's out sick today.
Yeah, Linda's out here, yeah.
I mean, any thoughts on your, anything we're missing in relation, I mean, pretty much, you know, Niantic Center, it's a go, we already, yeah, you, you have to. I think it's, Melissa, not to put you on the spot, but, I mean, I know, you know, space is another component. I know Niantic Center has a classroom, and Flanders has a classroom. Haynes does not have a classroom anywhere near the other kindergarten teachers.
Not anywhere near, I mean, I do have classrooms in another wing.
Yeah, yeah. Which obviously can be, can be done, but-
Yeah. Is there, if, if you had a class of twenty, twenty-one, I heard somebody said twenty-one out there, so, twenty kids, and you, and we assigned the full-time para, well-trained, and that class, for the mix of the children in that class, turned out to be more difficult than what you would typically would anticipate, would adding some additional para-support in help to bring that back to kind of a right frame? Or is it, or is, at some point, you know, you've just exceeded the capacity of the trained, professional element, kindergarten teacher to, you know, to deal with it?
I mean, I don't, you know, you're, it's not, there's no comparison, right? The training that a certified teacher undergoes is comparison to a para-professional. And not that para-professionals aren't wonderful, and they certainly do help us tremendously. But it is interesting, knowing that this was coming up tonight. I had a very quick discussion with some of my kindergarten teachers today at, at bus duty. And I said to them, hypothetically, would you rather stay with a class of twenty or twenty-one and have a para in your room supporting you and have another set of hands? Or would you rather have a class of fifteen with no para-support at all? Because sort of going into this meeting, my understanding was, if we did go to another classroom teacher, we would not be funding paras for every classroom as well. So I, I thought it was one or the other. And it was interesting, as they pondered it, and I certainly don't wanna throw them out there, but they were just thinking, wow, I don't know, with some of the children I have in my classroom, if I would really wanna lose another set of hands. So they didn't have one answer or another, and I think it would beg further discussion, to be honest with you.
Yeah.
But it was interesting that they weren't automatically, oh, give me another teacher and take away an extra set of hands. They actually thought about it and didn't really know, with some of the students in the classroom, how they might manage just by themselves with not another set of hands. But I don't wanna say one way or the other. I'm not speaking for them, but I do think I would prefer to go back and have further conversation.
The, if, if, but how, if you were to add some more teachers, two more element, I mean, you're already looking for the, the first one on, so, how, what would be the lag time to add two more?
Could be, I mean, you have to post, well, we've got a posting out there. But, you know, if, if you find somebody from another district, it's gonna be, they're gonna hold them for thirty days. So it's gonna be, at the most, a month after we even interview, and, you know-
Onboarding, it's a lengthy process.
It's a process.
So that person probably would be in charge of their class and kind of things rolling. No, I'm hearing, I'm hearing November first.
Yeah, like, at the end of October.
Sixty days, it sounds like.
Yeah. So is that, so the question then comes back, is that more harmful than kind of dealing with what, the hands that we've been, been dealt at this point, you know? So that's, there's the risk, risk benefit thing there, too.
Well, how are we close on, when's the closing date on the kindergarten teacher we have posted?
Thursday.
Is Thursday?
Yep.
Do we have at least three applicants who would be-
We have like sixty-five or seven.
So we could just turn it into a higher three, but we already have sixty-five.
Yeah, you can, you can roll, because you've already posted for the same job. So, we can roll with the group that we have in the pool. But the thing is, you're still, you're still thirty days after interviews.
Right, but, so, but it wouldn't be sixty, because we've already posted. So we already have the applicants.
Do you mind if I do share a little bit of a story? Just a couple of years ago, and you might recall some of it, was our numbers were higher at Flanders. And we borrowed, or we asked a teacher to come from Lilly B. Haynes. Do you remember that?
Yes, yes.
Remember? It was a kindergarten class.
Yep.
And I remember saying, well, if that number goes up, we need to, we need to hire, right? Do you recall that? And it never happened. And I will never forget, through the year, speaking to that teacher, that it was, it was one of the hardest years she had ever had as a teacher. And it was a kindergarten class. And it was, you know, on that cusp, you know, in, you know, over the twenty, and we did make a commitment at the eighteen. And we did that for a reason, because we valued the class sizes.
Yeah.
We do. So, I mean, I know that it's difficult, and I'm certain that we're gonna have to go through line, line, line to try to find the money, but I think it comes down to what's important.
Let me throw this out there. I mean, Melissa, in, in hearing what you, you know, I had a conversation with your, your teachers, I mean, even if there wasn't inequity, if we didn't add in over at Haynes, because your teachers wanted to stick with the model that you have, you know, now, there's an inequity of having, you know, twenty in those larger classrooms over at Haynes. And at times, it's not always twenty kids. It's often not twenty kids in the room at the same time, versus, you know, the other two buildings being fifteen in their classrooms. Is the inequity that much of an issue? We've had an inequity in the past with Niantic Center always being lower with the class sizes.
Oh, I have. Yeah, well, listen, I recall those numbers when I first came onto this board, and I, I was stunned, I couldn't believe that one classroom had ten students in it, and one had twenty-three, and the inequity and the divisiveness that that, that-
And it's fine, yeah, I'm just, I'm just putting all options on the table.
I just said, the other, the other interesting point is, is that, given the, because you have three classes at Flanders and three kindergarten classes, and three at Haynes, the numbers are, even though that they're twenty, when you do all the math, everything comes out at, if you were to add three kids, three kids, three teachers into the mix across the three, you know, the three schools, you would hit fifteen kids per class, which is, which is at the bottom, kind of at the bottom end of our guideline, but it's, but it's not too small. I mean, I remember having a conversation, was that you can get, a, a classroom can get too small in terms of the diversity in the class, so, so that's just another piece of, of information, too.
Barb?
Just two things. I mean, obviously, ideally, if we had tons of money, we'd all go through three teachers.
And more.
So, at this point, where I am with everything I've heard, is, I really think, we're, we, set a guideline, but it's a guideline. It's not a mandatory rule. It's a guideline.
Yeah.
And I think that, at this point, I think we should let the professionals decide what they think is best for their kids and their school. So I think, I feel, it should be up to the administration and the teachers dealing with the kids, which model they think is better for their school and their kids. Because I know I have talked to kindergarten teachers who have said to me, I would prefer to have an extra set of hands in the room, rather than have a smaller class. Right? And it's all about the effectiveness of the teacher, right? That's what counts. So personally, I think it should be their, the administrator's decision, right? Because we have a guideline. I think, I would also say that, I think we need to be realistic about the deficit. We already had our budget cut two hundred and fifty thousand dollars by the Board of Finance. There is no fat in this budget. So we are not going to find the savings to pay for the hundred and twenty thousand dollar deficit we're gonna put ourselves in. And it's all well and good if we end up five hundred thousand dollars short to go to the Board of Finance, but we all know the Board of Finance is gonna say, you didn't have to add those kindergarten teachers. And so, think ahead, and what's that's gonna mean for all the kids in the district next year, right? You can forget any new initiatives, because you're already spending it. You're not gonna get any extra money. You'll be lucky if they give you the appropriation. They may tell us to go ahead and freeze, like we've done in the past. And then you're gonna get less money next year, and all those new initiatives and anything else you wanna do, you're not gonna be able to do. So I, I just think we have to be realistic about what damage we're doing to ourselves down the road. Now, next year, if all these housing things come in and we have way more enrollment, you know, then we're gonna have to add teachers, and then the Board of Finance can't say anything. But right now, with us being just at twenty-twenty-one in the other two schools, I don't think that the Board of Finance financially is gonna support our decision to hire a teacher. Would we like to, yes. And if we do it, I think we need to realize that ultimately, we may end up having to freeze supplies to pay for it. And if we're willing to do that, then do it. But otherwise, I think you need to think about what you're gonna be giving up in order to get those two teachers, right? I mean, it's, we're not living in the ideal world where we can just, we all know, yeah, it would be great to hire three teachers and have fifteen kids in a class, but I think we're gonna pay for it in a lot of other ways. So I think we should let the professionals take a look at the kids, talk to the teachers, decide what they think is best. If they think they can do it with a para, then I think we should do it. If they come back and they say to us, no, we think we have to have another teacher, then fine, then we bite the bullet and we do it. But I don't think we should decide for them. I don't think that's our job.
I think that's fair, Barbara.
I think it's business.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, I, we also had a Barbara.
Cause-
You sure you don't wanna run for the board again?
Would like, I mean, I would like to hear more, myself, from the administrators. A lot kinda happened today, rather quickly, for information, so-
Yeah. I'm sorry, Eric had his hand up, I was trying to get that, and-
So Barbara, very well said, and I appreciate everything you said. And the part that I struggle with is, I, I wanna give, I wanna hear from the administrators and, and teachers, and what they need or what they think they want. I definitely want that as part of our decision. But I still think the decision sits somewhere at this table, at least with Jeff.
With Jeff, oh, absolutely.
Or, yeah.
Yeah.
Because I, I just wanna reiterate the point. We're six weeks into the fiscal year. We had standing room only at the middle school, when we got the five hundred thousand dollar cut, saying, there's just no way. And we, we all agreed, there was no way. I don't know what we would have done. It was still two hundred and fifty thousand, we said that, right? Six weeks into the year, we're gonna hire three teachers and say, we can afford to cover. I don't know what, if I'm on the Board of Finance, credibility gone.
Yeah, I agree. I think it's this year responsible.
Credibility gone. I don't wanna, I don't wanna hurt this, you know, I don't, again, I might, I'm, I'm not as diplomatic as everyone, and I kinda say my, so, apologies. I hope everybody understands, I do want, you know, I want what's best for the kids. I always want what's best for the kids. But there's also that long-term, and that's what I, I'm not gonna belabor it, but you made that point, is my worry is, next year, that five hundred thousand dollar cut is not changing.
No.
It is not gonna change, because they will say, you guys always figure it out. And we had, we do, because we freeze supplies, Jeff and Mary Ann, Mariana, do a great job at managing the budgets with us, and we're able to find it. I just worry, this is a big commitment, it's for my, it's about a hundred and fifty grand, plus or minus, and I don't know where we find it. I don't even know what the savings would be if we froze supplies. I don't know, I don't know what that number would be.
Depends, yeah, on what we, what we froze. I mean, we-
I mean, is it in there?
Well, we froze all last year, all supplies, and came up with four to five hundred thousand dollars.
As somebody who's been in the field and having this zero-based budgeting, I don't have much left right now.
Yeah, we, we can't-
The majority of, when teachers need stuff, they need it now.
Yeah.
So I gotta tell you, like, if you were to freeze mine, you're not gonna get much of a, yeah.
Yeah, so that's, that's-
Eric, if, if they came back, if Jeff came back and said, if Jeff came back and said, discussions have all occurred, we've looked very seriously at everything, we definitely should hire two more, not in addition to the one teacher at, at Niantic Center, we gotta add two more teachers. I would fully support that. And then to just say, I'd say then we'll figure it, we'll figure, we'll figure it out. Because I come back and say, again, it comes back to what, where is the, where, what are the priorities in, across the whole district? And this was the thing, like, you know, and again, not, I'll use this as an example, but it's, uh, when we ask, well, hey, for language for elementary school, hey, that's great, yeah. Well, but what would you be willing to give up? So, so I'm not really willing to compromise kindergarten, first grade, and second grade. That's, that's the, that's the foundation. And so, we're gonna have these times where we're right on that fringe, and I appreciate all, all the, you know, talking, so, then if, if the administrative team goes away and says, we can't make it work, so be it. If they come back and they say, we can, we will make, we can make this work with the following increases in, in whatever, then I, then I would say, yeah, I would, I think that's the right thing.
All right, so I'm gonna quickly gather some information, because we have to make some decisions quickly.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
We can't delay, because if we're gonna add in, then we've got a, there's bonds that are forming between kids and teachers.
Yeah, when you're asking for information, I understand having information input from administrators, but I'm also eager to hear what our teachers-
Oh, absolutely, yes. That's what I say, yes.
So I just wanted to put that out there.
That's where just what Melissa did today, you know, she, she talks to the teachers.
What you said was very powerful, Barbara. And I, I certainly support our superintendent and administration. And it is up to administration, yes, but we have a board for a reason.
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
And I just want to press that, okay? And each one of us bring different perspectives to this table, and remind people sometimes, you reminding me at times, too, of different things, and, and Eric as well. I always call him the money guy, because sometimes I'm not, you know, thinking about, because I am thinking about something else, because that is at the top of my, my ladder, and I don't apologize for that. So I do hear you, and I understand that. But at the end of the day, you know, we have to make a collective decision that's gonna benefit our students. So I am eager to hear back your information that you get, and then we'll move forward.
Yeah, I'll work on this tomorrow.
One more question, I think what he said was very powerful, that we lose face with the Board of Finance. I want them to know, this is the way we proceed. I want them to know upfront, daily, what is coming out of our budget. What did you say, I'm sorry?
I said, I'll be telling them Wednesday.
All right, thank you. No, you will, Jamie, I know you will.
I will.
They need to know that it's not, because, like you talked about, maybe six months from now, we're gonna go with them and say, we need, go to them and say, we need these funds. I want them to know now what we're doing to our budget to provide an excellent education for their students. And I want them to know what we're losing, that we're not gaining as a school system, because we, they keep continuing to cut our budget. I know we do go to every meeting, but I want them to know how painful it is. But let's, let's just say, what the pain I see this board experiencing.
Yep.
It's just horrible. I mean, no one, it's not a good feeling. Did I make myself clear?
Yes, oh, yeah, no, no, I-
Sorry, but I know it's gonna leave.
No, it's okay.
But, just a little, because I think it's really important, you know, and, and I think through the discipline to the Board of Finance, if we go down this path, there's-
I think we should do a quick home workshop before talking about committees and the whole board.
Yes, Jim?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Eric.
I was talking.
Go ahead.
So, this, I'm sorry, but it's really important, this messaging, and the messaging is what's changed.
Yeah.
And you have to start out that our projections for kindergarten enrollment were, whatever, 17 a class or whatever numbers we started with when we went through the budget. We told them this budget, even if $250,000 was going to be difficult to achieve.
Yep.
What's changed? So, what's changed is now we're pushing higher numbers, and it'd be nice to show the history of if it was 17 or whatever it was previously, that these were not overly predictable. And it would be nice to say, we did, we pushed, someone asked, "Why did we cut two buses?" Well, how else were we going to find $250,000? We did what we could. We thought we could do what we thought it would work. It didn't, right? So, now, when you cut and you start hitting points, this is where things start breaking through, right? You start, you cut to a point where it's not fluff, it's not decisions, these are now like tough, tough decisions we made, and you make mistakes, right? You cut the buses, you cut them too much. We did what we could. We looked at the teachers and said, "We think we can survive at this." Well, we can't, because we ended up with more enrollment, not out of our control, we couldn't predict, that's what we got. So, there's something around those messaging, not that we're asking for money yet, and we're going to make, do everything we can to make trade-offs, but they have to understand what's changed. If we don't, go on and say, talk about what's changed. We tried the buses, they didn't, they're not working. We have more enrollment than we thought. Whatever else, other things, I don't know where we are, special ed, right? We had to, I was out, I missed that meeting, so we had to have a, like, those were unknown.
Right.
Those are really important to get across now. So, what's happened in six weeks, well, that's what's happened. And that we're going to be back with them and give them updates, but we may, this might be the year we're unable to survive within our budget.
Yeah.
So, if that's the messaging, I'm comfortable with that, if we end up with three teachers, but we have to, I want to make sure we get that upfront to the Board of Finance, so they understand what's changed.
Yeah.
I do think that our messaging last time with Board of Finance was, I think, I think it was honest, and I think, I think it was, we were able to say, "This is a tough, these were, these are tough cuts, this is a lean budget." And, and I think, I think we said that, you know, with a great deal of sincerity, and I think that it's important that we continue to do that. And, you know, I think that, you know, in the past, you know, maybe they, maybe the budgets haven't, maybe they haven't been as sincere, you know, whenever. And, you know, that did give them fat, and maybe the Board of Finance is accustomed to that, and they need to get used to the idea that, no, we are laying it straight. So, I do think that, and the important thing about that managing the long-term thing is not necessarily some sort of gamesmanship with the Board of Finance, it's, we need to maintain long, good long-term relationships so we can maintain long, long-term outcomes for our students. You know, we need to get that, you know, that level of communication where we can go to them and say, "This is important for our students," and they believe us, and they support that. And, and, you know, so we, you know, I think it's not, it's not gamesmanship to just get more money or something, it's, it's, let's get to a point where we can have these honest conversations. So, I, I think where I am on this is, 100% agree, we should, we should listen and defer to the teachers, because, you know, and I, I have a son in one of these classrooms that's being affected, and I, I want, I want his teachers and his administrator to kind of make their recommendation, and I, and I will support that, because there's some, there's some downsides, you know? There's, there's defect on the kids, they're going to get moved, maybe my kid's in that, on that list, I don't know, but, you know, I want the teachers to say, "It was worth it, because I wouldn't have been able to manage that class, so, your kid moving, you know, tough decision, but it was the right decision for your kid, and it was the right decision for these kids." So, I do want to defer and kind of go with their, and, and I think at that point, once we say, "No, our teachers, this is their recommendation, they understand the gravity of this, they understand that the budget," and the administration kind of represent that side of it, if they say, "No, this is important to us," then we go, we can still go to the Board of Finance with a straight face and say, "This was needed," and, and we can continue to maintain that.
Good. Okay. All right, so...
So, I'm going to do some homework.
You can do some homework.
Quick homework, and I'll let you know what our final decision is.
I guess, yeah, so as you, as you folks cull through the resumes, you should be thinking about...
Yeah, which the timing is perfect for that, you know, it was Thursday, as Mr. Provost said, so, we'll see, you know, where we're at in the next, the next day.
Okay, okay, good. Now, I rudely was interrupting or whispering in Jeff's ear when Eric was trying to get his remarks on the, on the table, I apologize to Eric. The next two items on the agenda are related, fairly specific board agenda topics. One is talking, having a discussion about our meeting structure and committees and timing and all that stuff. And the other is, is just to initiate a brainstorming session around our goals for the coming year in conjunction with where the administrative team is and everything. Since it's at nine o'clock right now, and I, our board historically has had a tough time making, doing much past nine o'clock, I was going to, I was going to suggest, suggest...
I absolutely do not agree.
That, what, no, okay, well, all right, so, so nine fifteen. So, that we look for, in our calendars in this month, the opportunity to schedule a workshop, so we can, we can do, yeah, this month. Well, I, you know, I mean, we're back in business here, to do these two, these particularly two items, having goal discussion, maybe do a little board assessment as well, and talk about our committee structures, and in a workshop setting, so forth. Barbara?
I just was going to say, committee structure-wise, some of us are not going to be on the board as...
That's, that's, that's a fair point, too. Yeah, so, yeah, we don't really want to make...
So, to set up the committee structure and then have to change it, you might want to wait on that until after the election.
Well, that's, that's fair.
And the new board is seated, I mean, the goal part you could do.
Yeah, we could, yeah, yeah.
But, the committee structure is...
Well, the only piece of that, Barbara, too, the committee, I think part of that was, do we want to, you change times? Do you want to start meetings at six o'clock rather than seven? Do you want to have one meeting on, two meetings on?
That was, that was, that was the thing...
But, I'm talking about members, you were...
Yeah, oh, no, no, no.
Yeah, off on, yeah.
Yeah, we're kind of tweak, tweaking the system, make it more functional.
So, the subcommittee meeting is at 5:30. I kind of like it when it's at five.
Yeah, so, but we would have that conversation, so, I, so I don't, Jeff, are you...
Yeah, I'm in favor of that. I think it, you know, deserves its attention.
I just, I just think that we're better to do that, maybe have a little food or so, have a workshop and have a little food and stuff like that with it, so. People are looking for...
I got nothing in September.
Okay, you work too hard. Bill, are you okay with that, or?
I will make the meeting if I can.
Yeah, well, we'll pull out and we'll, we'll see, see if we can, we can sneak one in here, just because I think to give it the right level of quality, and, and I know that every time we do a workshop type of an environment, everybody feels really good about it, because we can focus on these, these certain topics, so, okay? So, all right, so if everyone agrees with that, we will just then jump down to administration reports, and superintendent?
Just real quick, we talked about the ribbon cutting ceremony dates, coastal update, coastal connections, I think they've really settled in well to their new home and are doing great. If we get a tour, you know, for them, maybe even prior to the next meeting, and give a little report out, you know, at that time on how things are going there. Back-to-school nights, middle school is this Wednesday, so, Jamie, we're going to kind of work on that, because we got back-to-school night.
And Board of Finance.
And Board of Finance, so we're going to have to figure that one out. And the high school is Thursday night.
Do they go back to school at the middle school for me?
Go for me, too. My kids, I have a child there. And then, that's it, that's pretty much it for, you know, for, for me, for, for reports. You know, just redistricting, I was going to talk a little bit about that, but it's, I had not heard from any parents in relation to redistricting. I think it's, we've rolled that coin over and we're moving forward, so things are good.
I think the PTA has been outstanding.
They really did.
They really did.
Yeah, they really did, that of things, the summer that were going on.
They're incredible.
You know, kudos to each of them, to their work.
So, I had already mentioned in regards to sort of phasing in changes and updates, this is the first week that I'll actually be releasing updates and changes to the staff across the district. Things that I learned from years past, you think you have to have everything ready before they come back on the first day, and actually, they don't care you at all for several weeks, and it's not relevant, it's not a good time to give new information. Also, it's disrespectful for them as they're transitioning back in, and really having to get their legs underneath them, and just, I hope we can just get a relationship with the kids for the next couple of weeks, so, I'm excited to get a couple of things out. Tomorrow, I will start actually Tuesday's at school, this is my new structure that I'm working on, where I'm reporting to a school every Tuesday, and I'm staying there the entire day.
Nice, awesome.
So, that I'm there, I'm really excited about that. I spend all Mondays in central office meetings, so it's going to be really fun. Just be in the classrooms, be at the teachers, and just be in that space, so it's good. Quickly, too, just tech-wise, I didn't have to start the school year that I'd like to have in regards to, in regards to technology, continues to be an area that we need to continue to do better and do right by our users. Struggle for us to do an elementary building project in that opening with also the middle and high school without increasing my capacity of tech. I did have to call in a couple favors and get some extra bodies here a couple days, but I can afford within my contract to continue to do that. So, staff have had to be patient, but it's not, not anywhere I'm comfortable with it being, to be really honest with you. And then, the last thing is just a world language update, because of the staff open houses and the ribbon cutting and all of that, I am now proposing that the first day of that committee coming together is actually has to be October 7th, because there's not a night, that's what I'm curious about.
Yeah, I don't know how he's going to find a September date.
Because there's so many events coming on across the district. And we will be seeking membership beyond those that I've gotten from our internal staff, so.
I'm excited to have that committee.
Yeah, that'd be a good conversation.
Good, good. Mariana, anything to add?
Just, we're starting the audit earlier this year, so, and with the auditors, so that's, they'll be here sometime in November to go over the, what used to be the EDO-1, which is now the DFS, which was...
I know it.
You know, we are moving forward with the Munis contract.
Yes, excellent.
We are having a conference call scheduled with the representative from Munis, I think they've already signed up on the contract and are going to be scheduled with off years.
Outstanding. That is going to be a huge difference.
It'll be probably be 18 to 24-month process, but once done, it'll really, the software is, really, very good software.
And you've, you've, you're Munis, you, you, you know it, yeah, that's, yeah, that's what's really important, yeah, wow, wow. Don't let her, don't, don't let her leave.
Thank you.
Thank you. Trying to hold on to her. She says, "Yeah, leave."
So...
Thank you.
Okay, committee reports, we did have an FFO meeting, there was an FFO meeting earlier and I think you actually...
We covered it.
We, we, you guys had lots of discussion about the addition of staffing, so. Anything else to add, Eric and Barbara?
No, not really.
No? Okay. All right, so that brings us down to, thanks, board comments and...
You can go back up to E.
E?
There's a Board of Finance meeting this Wednesday at seven o'clock.
Oh, yeah.
Jeff and I will be making it by the skin of our teeth.
Okay.
Back to school by the most...
Good? All right.
Running from one to the next.
Yeah, really, wow. Okay, so, that brings us to board comments and future agenda topics, any, Jill?
I was just talking to him, I would put you on the spot, Eric, but we were talking about, of how variables, one thing is, student, student enrollment is such an unknown variable when we plan the budget every year. And, remember how you explained it to me, how you, what, kind of preempted or pre-explained to the Board of Finance? Look, we're saying that this is what we're doing with, in the first grade class, 15 students, but if it goes to 20, we may need this much more money on the budget. I'm just thinking of a way to preempt the Board of Finance or warn them at the beginning of the school year, maybe we go to their August meeting and say, "Look, we don't know what's going to happen with the attendance, for whatever format you think is correct, so we're not coming in without them knowing that this is something we have no control over, we have no control over what's going to happen with enrollment." And to keep the standards the same for all the students, so they have a great experience, we need to meet the, our guidelines that we have. I don't know how we'll do it or what we'll do, but I'd like, I'm sorry we keep talking about this, but having teachers and student ratio is so important baseline to the student and the teacher experience.
Yep, yep.
We need to somehow preempt them before the true use of the money for the budget. They're just going to say it's September, we need to let them know.
Okay.
I know, whatever he said was...
Yeah, good, okay. Bill?
I just want to possibly, spoke to Jeff, I plan on getting the robotics team in this last fall, but I think we might be able to pull it off for early October, which would work out well, because we have a local competition that we host in Old Lime, and it would be an opportunity to kind of invite everybody, and it would be a positive thing.
Good.
So, if, you know, if I can pull, I haven't had my first meeting with the team, I plan on meeting with them next week, but if we could get on the agenda for early October, that might be a fun thing.
Yeah, great, excellent, 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 excellent. Let's see, I saw a hand over here.
Yes, I wanted to thank Convocation with Mary. Yeah, it was a joy to be there for the day, to welcome all the teachers back, it was wonderful. The second thing I wanted to talk about was the committee for the senior grad party. I want to make sure that we're, have conversation about that, and if that needs to go on the AAA, that's certainly fine, but I want to kind of find out guidelines, parameters, how much we can support and not, because I believe liability came up, and I want to make sure that we can support that committee as much as possible, if we can.
Yep.
Be great, yeah. We're going to have a conversation, too, I think, that is on future agenda items about pre...
Yes, oh, absolutely, yeah. Well, that, that was...
I don't want that to get lost.
Yeah, and that was part of the reason, I knew that if we started a goal discussion, that we were going to go right down that, that, yeah.
I just didn't want to...
Yeah, oh, boy, yeah, I knew, yeah.
Just a nice reminder, I want to have that.
So, that's good. Excellent, 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 good. Let's see, then I saw, Jamie?
I have two.
And then Ryan?
One, there's been a lot of news lately about the vaping epidemic.
Hmm, yeah, yeah.
People getting sick and dying. I'm curious as to how it's been this year of the high school and the middle school.
Yep, yep, good. Ryan?
I'm not done.
Oh, I thought there was two.
I'm looking for a face. Okay, and then my second one is the Miracle League. We had our meeting on Thursday. We are at $496,312.13. We have a bunch of donations that we haven't gotten yet, that makes us outstanding, so we are going to be getting our drawings in the next couple of weeks to start building.
That's exciting.
Excellent.
Congratulations.
So exciting. And then, we have the Oyster Fest the 12th.
Yep.
And then, the Playing for a Miracle is December 6th, yeah.
Good.
So, I'll give you guys more updates when that gets closer.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Ryan?
Yeah, not to reiterate previous stuff, but I'm very interested in that sort of the bus safety kind of...
Bus safety conversation, make sure we cover that in the future or on our subcommittee. And then obviously, you know, the routes, we wanna get them fixed and ready to support whatever that takes, 'cause, you know, we have to. And then also on the field trips, you know, I look forward to future kind of conversations. I believe we said that's next week, or are we, or no, we didn't say that, did we? Well, I'm just interested in further conversations on that and what, you know, what we, where our priorities are relative to that. And then the other thing we talked about a little, well, maybe on a sidebar, was having an opportunity to maybe get into, observe a classroom at some of the schools, I really think that we should at least offer that, you know, pulse the board and see who's available. You know, just show our support for the teachers and, you know, help us make better, I don't know, just be better informed.
Ryan, does that kind of tie into what we were trying to do last year where we invited all three boards, Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, and it kind of fell apart? I'd love to put that back in place, so maybe we can work on another...
Even if it was a Board of Ed and just, hey, we're offering this, 'cause I think my understanding was, you know, it kind of fell apart, 'cause we were trying to get Board of Finance, Board of Selectmen there so that they, before they made their deliberations, they could see what the, I don't know, the situation on the ground. But I would be interested in just observing and maybe even a little bit longer form than maybe they would be interested in doing.
Mm-hmm.
You know, seeing a couple different classrooms and my understanding was some of the teachers were pretty excited to show up.
They were, yeah, I know, it was disappointing last year. Yeah, I got a lot of...
Yeah, so...
Yeah, even some of our paraprofessionals came up, they said they hope there's an opportunity to, you know, come in and see what I'm doing with, you know, a group of students, sort of thing, so.
I know, I know, you're doing great, great stuff and I'd like to be there, get them in the visibility.
Can I caveat, I'm gonna caveat on what he's saying, because whether or not you have a formal invite or not, you do have children within your school and you can spend the day there or you can volunteer, I've done it a million times each one, so you can really get in there and really see how each school runs and so whether or not you have a formal invite with twenty people, which I think would actually be a little bit distracting to be honest with you.
Well, we break in groups, so.
There's lots of different ways that you can help volunteer within your, within your school.
Good.
Can anyone go in anytime as long as they make an appointment, the new citizen?
Why wouldn't you just ask?
Yeah, no, we're frowning upon, yeah.
Because I was gonna go in.
No, no, don't just show up, yeah.
But I, you know, as I'm on the board, I was just gonna go, okay.
Yeah, no, call me first, Jill.
We need to do that.
And then we'll talk and then I'll reach out to the school and, you know, and you run that, I'll run that.
I'm just gonna drop mine for coffee.
Everybody's good?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, at this point, public comment, would any member of the public like to comment to the board on any matter concerning the district? Hi.
Sorry, had to stand up.
That's okay. I just need your name and your...
Yep, so my name is Cory Whitcraft. I live at seventeen Heritage Road and I will start this off. I had a really bad day, so I'm gonna apologize right now because I'm emotional. This wasn't what I was planning on talking about tonight, but has now with today's events become imperative. One of our biggest issues is communication. We seem to have a lack of administration, Board of Ed, Superintendent, Assistant Superintendent, communication on what's going on and what you guys need from parents and how we can rally you from Board of Finance to get things that you need. Also part of that, I called and left a message this afternoon at both of your offices and with the secretary, that there was an rabid animal in our neighborhood that personally came into my yard and attacked two of the children that were in my care. And I asked that you guys inform the high school, at least parents or children, and the middle school, children and parents that were in our neighborhood, so that on their walk home, that they do not have a parent or some sort of vehicle to get back, they could get home safely, and there was nothing. Nothing. That is unacceptable, because that goes to the safety of children in that area. What happened typically never happens, but it was a situation that happened and it wasn't okay how it was dealt with. I did however receive two emails that the bus was late. So for some reason, there seems to be a large disconnect on getting information, where it needs to go, how it should get there. Kindergarten also is part of that. We had a great, I have a new kindergartner, she is at Flanders, we have other wonderful friends who are at Lilly B. They get a packet in their mail with information on how to go through the lunch line, how, what to expect on your first day, what to bring, where your kids are gonna go, information on your children's sheets. We get a letter with one from the teacher saying hello, this is me, one from the principal. That's not equitable. There should be better communication across the schools, especially, and I thought going into this redistricting era, like this year, we would have a more equitable experience going into kindergarten. Another part of that is at the curriculum meeting that we had with Amy Drone and you went through all of the steps on who to call, where to go, and I, that information needed to be provided to parents that should have started on a kindergarten level, 'cause as a third grade parent, that was the first time I was seeing that information on who, what the social worker's responsibility was and who that person was and who we should contact. There is a disconnect with communication and that needs to be fixed. We wanna be your advocates, we wanna go, like, we wanna go to the Board of Finance for you and fight for you and get our kids what they're supposed to be getting in the school system. But for some reason, over the past couple of years, we've just watched things go away. We've watched special programs be cut down by time, which goes against every single data point out there. You've had programs go away, you've redistricted, which greatly caused equity across the schools. Now, my daughter is in a classroom of twenty-one kids and Flanders does have three kindergarten classrooms, twenty-twenty and twenty-one. And yet my fourth grader has a class of nineteen. You took these, you know, sprawling classrooms, so not only do you have a class size of twenty-one kids, but you cut the class with the renovations, the classroom itself is smaller, so now you're telling me that you're gonna have twenty-one kids in the class and you have the teacher and you're adding more pairs into a classroom that's half the size the kindergarten class used to be, physical space. At least at, at least at Flanders. That needs to be addressed. I put my daughter in another class with fifteen kids, I like move her halfway through the school year, explain it to parents, communicate with us, that's what you wanna do, that's what's better for the kids. There needs to be a better way to do that. Other part is nature's classroom. We have yet to have a decision on nature's classroom. No one has come up with a decision on nature's classroom. And that field trip, it is a field trip, the high schoolers can go to the Bahamas, the high schoolers can go to Mexico, that's been decided within the past month. Yet we have been begging to keep a program that is historic for our school, let us open it up to all fourth grade across the district, let the parents run it, let the kids earn the money for it through pasta suppers and let them have an experience that as children have testified to you guys is a life-changing, memorable moment from their education. So please make a decision and be the Board of Ed, be the school that we moved here for, that we built houses and made roots for, but our children shouldn't suffer because of budget cuts or supply, you wanna freeze the supplies? Freeze the supplies, ask parents for supplies. Not every person will be able to get supplies, but some parents will have the means to do it. Ask what we, like, let us know what we can do, but we need to figure out how to do that together.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else like to address the board at this time? Anyone else? Yes?
Tristan Laurie, Ten Caves and Drive. I'd like to go back, actually reiterate something that Ryan had said earlier and I think Jamie was getting at too, regarding the additional teachers. I just think that, so I also have a kindergartner at Flanders this year and I know that obviously the longer the decision goes on, the harder it's gonna be to transition them out of it. And so every child is different, they're all developmentally different, they're all coming in at wildly different ages with different experiences, so getting that momentum and having them going in a familiar environment with a familiar teacher and even, you know, with or without the bonds of other kids, just the familiarity of the setting, I can see that being very disruptive. I'm more of a realist, I guess, you know, if that's the way it has to be, that's the way it has to be and I try to teach my kids the same thing, you know, sometimes you get what you want, sometimes you don't. Compromise is part of life and that's fine, so, you know, I can see either way, twenty-one doesn't seem like a magic number, twenty-one really well-behaved kids who have a strong background are a little more mature, maybe no skin off the teacher's back, fifteen kids with, you know, behavioral issues may be wildly more difficult. So I think the numbers don't really say everything, again, reach out to the teachers, try to get a sense of, are they at the point where they're, they're saying, look, I gotta raise the red flag, this is gonna be a terrible year if I don't get help and here's the kind of help I need. I'm less concerned personally about the inequity of classroom sizes across the district. If, if I'm in a situation where our kids have twenty-one and somebody else has fifteen, to me that doesn't tell the story. The number is only, you know, a digit on a piece of paper, doesn't really explain the classroom experience. And so I'm perfectly comfortable with whatever decision you guys move forward with, we will be, we'll be fine, just be aware that the number doesn't drive it all and kids have a tough time with transition, some more so than others, so just try to weigh that factor in. And then bringing back the budget discussion, I may be way off on this, but I've seen recall from last year reviewing the budget, there was a huge number allocated for insurance and I think there was a lot of uncertainty in that number, right? Because last year there was a lot of growth in the insurance costs, this year we moved to a town plan where the costs are more deterministic, but I don't know if there's a sense district-wide as to how many people have actually locked in and are taking the option and if their spouses are or not, so that might be something to take an early look at, 'cause there could be more than the margin you're looking for to cover those costs, but I just don't know when the election period is and when it has to be locked in, so.
Very good, thank you. Anybody else like to address the board at this time? Any matter concerning the district, anyone else? Yes, yes.
My name is Amy Rogers, thirty-five, Legendary Road. What Tristan brought up about looking at the numbers, something I remembered in kind of in Cory's light too of how can we support you? I remember going to that finance meeting and they were saying that they had frustrations with the Board of Ed, that they had asked about a few things and it was a situation where I thought, well, those are probably good questions to ask and I'm not educated in knowing what you all have done, it's kind of the communication piece, but if you are going back to them saying this is a situation, be sure to address the things that they mentioned in that meeting and I'd have to look back to the minutes, but there was two or three very specific things that said, we, you know, where they were saying, we've asked you about these things and what have you done, just my thought was make sure you show them what you have done, 'cause they clearly were bringing that up and, you know, being new to this environment and my children, I don't know what you have done, so it was just a thought that, a note that I made to make sure that you're showing the give and take.
Thanks, Amy.
Thank you so much.
Anyone else like to address the board at this time? Anyone else? Scott?
Good evening everyone, thanks for having me, Scott Mahon, as you know, I'm representing the East Lime Teachers Association. Just a couple of things, first of all, piggybacking on what Jeff had said earlier about appreciating the amount of work, amount of effort that was overcome really, in order to get our kids into their classrooms, especially on the elementary level. I would go even further though to, to make sure that we understand the efforts that, and I understand you all know this, but I'd like the district to know this as well, the amount of work it took for our teachers to get their classrooms ready was extraordinary. And I know our superintendent spent time moving stuff out of Flanders building one night, but he was also there hand in hand with, with many of our teachers who had just so much work to do, as you can imagine, the boxes on tops of boxes on top of boxes, plus construction equipment and dirt and bricks and mortar and stuff like that, that was still in the room and they had, they had to deal with this adversity and yet we were still able to open on time, so I appreciate their work as I'm sure you do as well. I'm not gonna belabor the point about the equity issue with the three elementary schools and the kindergarten classes. I've heard great discussion here, quite frankly, I came worried that this was not going to occur, but I feel very comfortable based on a lot of your, your comments and comments from the, from the general public as well, that this is something that is going to be looked at very closely. But I would like to say as a professional educator who represents all the professional educators of this district, that bottom line, this is not equitable, that fifteen, fifteen, fifteen and twenty, twenty, twenty-one does not make the same educational experience, regardless of how you look at it, regardless of where the money is coming from. So that's really all I wanted to add to that. You have, you have a lot of work to do, so, good luck with it. The last thing that I wanted to, to address was something that I brought up at the June Board of Ed meeting, and that is I'm urging you to look back again at the Brown and Brown brokerage fee.
Yeah, yeah.
We're coming up to October and that was a time when I think we were starting to think about maybe moving that along. I don't think we need it and I would like you to take a look at that again.
Good, thank you, Scott.
Thank you, Scott.
Anybody else like to address the board at this time? Anyone else? Yeah, sure.
Just some notes, I don't know, we've been here for a while, but I wanna thank the teachers, East Lime teachers, some of the best...
It's John, right?
Yeah, from, okay, good. East Lime teachers, best teachers in the country.
Dean Carlo.
The work you guys do, thank you very much. Just some quick notes, bus safety, I know we're talking about budget cuts, so this may not be possible, but looking at possibly putting GPSs on the buses so the parents can, I know some towns have that, Madison.
Process, yeah, we've been talking with First Student about it.
So the parents can go on track with their kids, they look at bus two and they can see the buses coming, so it's a nice thing to have, probably not that expensive, honestly. The landscaping, I noticed, I talked to Ryan about this, they did this beautiful landscaping job in front of Lilly B Haynes, but it takes a lot of upkeep and money to keep it looking. I saw you guys actually weeded it right before the beginning of school year, which was nice. But hopefully we have a plan going forward so it doesn't look like a jungle again, you know, every year, so, and that gets expensive, Jeff, you know, I take care of the yard, so it takes a lot of love and effort.
It does.
The arbivites, you had mentioned some, they used to have the arbivites, they still do mostly between IONX Center and the cemetery, I was hoping maybe you guys could replant some of those, they grow fast and quick. It just, the elementary kids looking at the cemetery, I remember when I was, we went to IONX Center, it was always nice to have the break there from the, looking at the headstones.
I'll have to check, yeah.
They took down a lot of those, there's right by the basketball court, a lot of them were taken down.
Yeah, I think on the cemetery side, I'll have to go check.
But even if you plant it around five feet, yeah, they grow like three feet a year, those green giants are huge. The open house, safety, Jeff, if you could talk to the police chief, I'm sure he'd be willing to volunteer some efforts, be on the police commission, I know he'd give...
Thank you, definitely.
And the class sizes, I know a lot of time spent on the kindergarten classes, I have a, I have a child in kindergarten and third grade and Mr. Lurk, probably backing it, even third grade, the classes are getting pretty large, we're like twenty-two, twenty-three, even more, so, you know, a couple kids moved to the district, we're at twenty-five, which is ridiculous for third graders. I remember a study that was done a year or two ago that said East Lime was gonna shrink.
Yeah.
Yep.
That study was, obviously.
They're gonna cost our money back.
Candace, tell us about that study.
We want our money back.
But with this project's going and EB growing to historical sizes, we haven't seen since the mid-eighties, and obviously that study made no sense. I know you guys wanna spend time on the kindergarten scrape, but I think you're gonna have to spend some time looking at increasing class sizes going forward and maybe having a subcommittee or something, just to look at that, because they're gonna continue to grow in the elementary schools, it's just, yeah, it's not, it's not getting small.
Yeah.
And that's all, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to address the board at this time? Yes?
Jill Johnson, two thirty-four Grassy Hill Road. I just wanted to thank the board for the conversation tonight. As I listened to each of the topics, something that came to mind was that these topics, of course, are all connected and of course you, being board members, certainly can appreciate that perhaps more than anybody. You know, I do wanna stress to the board that the connection between the bus safety, the larger class sizes, has a very profound effect. So I do have a kindergartner at Flanders, he takes the bus for fifty minutes and he's been on the bus in the afternoons for upwards of two hours and every day I call the school and the school tells me that the bus comes at nine oh five and the school does not, the bus does not come at nine oh five, the bus unloads at nine twelve, he's been in his classroom at nine thirty and I do not believe he's gotten the start that he needs. I do have a second grader and I believe the smaller classroom size at the time that he was a kindergartner, I believe the time that he was on the bus, which was a thirty-minute route, put him off to a good start. And I think my kids are both different from each other and I know that every kid needs different things, but I really wanna urge to this board to think about the impact of all of these things together. A very long bus ride into a room of twenty kids... A very long bus ride into a room of twenty kids, um, with a teacher that has expressed a different opinion than what I've heard tonight on the board. The two opinions that I heard that a teacher who has a, a classroom size of twenty would want the paraprofessional, um, that's not shared across the board, but it's just not and that, um, needs to be communicated as well. So I have written numerous emails to the transportation lead. I think, you know, at first for me it was, I need, I need my son to get to school on time because that's what I'm trying to teach my son, um, both my sons obviously, um, and I, I think we need to pair these, um, topics together. So I really want to urge us to think about how these affect, um, and, and I am speaking for the kindergarten class. My second grader is also exhausted and falls asleep thirty minutes before his bedtime because he is on the bus for a very long time. So that's kind of telling too. And so, thank you for the conversation tonight and please, I urge you to think about these things together and I know that you do, but continue to do so.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Yes.
Hello, Maria Gonzalez, two four three Grassy Hill Road. I wanted to share just a personal experience with the bus situation. This is our sixth academic year in East Lime and I have three children. My youngest is in third grade and we have never had the issues that we had this year. We had one of the buses that went high school, middle, elementary and I knew when my middle schoolers were showing up half hour forty-five minutes late, exactly how late my daughter was going to be. That was fixed last week, we got our own bus for the elementary. On Wednesday it finally arrived on time, it's scheduled to arrive at eight seventeen and it's scheduled to drop off at Flanders at eight forty-seven. So I gave the bus an extra ten minutes, I called around eight fifty-seven, nine AM and it hadn't arrived yet. So the information you have online for that particular route is inaccurate. My daughter's supposed to be in class, ready to learn, stuff put away, settled at nine oh five AM and she's just barely, barely getting to school at that time in the best-case scenario. That means the bus is right on time, there's no issues, we've got beautiful weather, nothing's in the way. So my concern as a parent is what is going to happen in the winter when the roads are slick? Or we have rain, it's dark, we do have traffic congestion, so many factors that in a regular school year, in an ideal scenario like we've had in the past, would happen maybe two times a year, that now I'm concerned is going to happen maybe two times a week or several times in a month, which is not acceptable. I get a phone call if my kids are not in school on time and I don't call them in late or tardy or absent. I have no control when the district is making my child late, all right? And, um, I think it's working out so far, she's not complaining, the teacher's saying she's there for the start, but she's really not. He's there at eight fifty with worksheets for kids when they get in early and I think, um, the goal for the start of the year should have been for kids to be at school before those scheduled times so that you give yourself that wiggle room in case of the things that are inevitably going to happen, the weather, the traffic, whatever else. You even mentioned that yesterday, oh, we had another case of buses arriving late. So I just wanted to share that, um, as you move forward since I do hope you'll continue to look at this. I understand that bus two is having much worse problems. Flanders dismisses at three thirty and that bus is not leaving till almost four fifteen. That's forty-five minutes that those kids are still at the elementary school, it's not acceptable.
No, yeah.
But it's not the only problem, you have other buses that are still having issues of just barely getting to school on time at the high school, middle, elementary.
Yeah, good, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else? What else?
Yeah, I don't, I don't need to stand, the frustration's palpable. Look, my son's on bus number two, it doesn't, from any of the parents that have, on other buses, the one thing that I would add, if I could add anything, is certainly it's a problem in the morning to get our children at school. My, my son starts CCD this Wednesday at four thirty, so, I, I can, I can work through the other stuff, but I just don't want to get on, up to a bad start with God. Four forty-five every day. And we have to hire help sometimes to get them to the bus and off the bus, so again, it's just, I, I know there's a lot of fires to put out.
Yeah.
I, I enjoyed being here tonight, I wish I did.
Thank, well, you enjoyed?
Yeah, I did, yeah.
Todd, you want to run from the Board and give a baseball?
Okay.
Yeah, this is, I hear a lot worse than this, it's okay.
All right.
Thanks, Todd.
Is that it, everybody, everybody good? So, okay, um, thank you very much for your input and thank you very much for staying and listening to, to at least see that we're trying, we're, we're trying, okay, so, so it's very good. With that, um, we have no need of an executive session, uh, I will entertain a motion.
I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second, Jill, I didn't, I got that. All those in favor?